And welcome to the July 6, 2022, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, I would ask that Ms. Lamagna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number 10 are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 11 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in a public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Morse reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relatively orderly process thereof. Please be courteous, respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business discussed tonight."
Ms. Lamagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
President.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay. Well, now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the June 1st, 2022 city commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Strickland. Do we have any questions concerning the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. At this time, if there are any changes to our agenda, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we add item 8M $500. This is going to be added to item 8M $500 to Daytona Express Inc., Track and Field Club for the July 29 through August 6, 2022 event from the Bike Week sponsorship funds of Mayor Derrick L. Henry. That concludes those items.
Moved to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner May. Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. We have no presentations this evening, so we're going to move on to item number seven. This is the opportunity for people to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Amy Pyle, and on deck is Frederick Brown. Oh, probably was. Okay. And so our next speaker is Frederick Brown.
Um, when you first look at item 8B, you think to yourself, wow, this sounds like a really good thing for the city. Now, I don't know how many members of the commission actually spent time, went to the website, studied the entire proposition. Now, I understand this perfectly well, and we just voted in this huge Amazon distribution center. You also have to look at what most of their argument is about, infrastructure. Is it going to tear up the infrastructure? The point is, the way that goods get transported is they go from point A to point B. Whether you take it in two trucks or one truck, doesn't matter. It gets there. And if it doesn't, we all see the results of that, empty shelves. So what you're doing is you're then blocking some of the tandem trucks and stuff that they can do, keeping in mind that loads on trucks are governed by the vehicle suspension systems, and they are regulated. And because we have a major distribution center coming here to Daytona Beach, this is important to some of the truck drivers. Now, as most of you know me long enough, I'm big on the environment. I'm big on saving energy. I'm big on stopping carbon. It's a lot cheaper and a lot less carbon when you can have a larger load in one trip than happen to get two full trucks with two trips, because of course you're hauling the whole truck. So it all sounds good on the surface, and to some cities, it's important. But if we just blindly jump on the bandwagon and say, oh, yeah, we're in favor of this, we're not looking at the entire problem. And to here in Daytona, because carbon is so important to the rising ocean levels, and those of you who have been here long enough to know, since the '60s, the ocean is getting higher and higher. We're going to be dealing more with with rising oceans and flooding in the cities. It's problems that we're going to end up paying for. So getting rid of carbon is important. And by restricting some of these things, it's going to cause us to burn more carbon. And I think people aren't really looking at the entire question, and there's a lot of politics involved in here. I get it. Okay? There's some valid points on both sides. But I really am concerned that we're not looking at the key issue, which is getting goods from point A to point B at minimal cost, minimal carbon footprint. To me, that's very, very important to this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? Do we have a motion and a second?
I don't have a motion.
That was for the, uh...
Agenda.
Agenda. Be the motion for the consent agenda. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reed. Take a second from Commissioner Strickland.
Okay.
All right, if there are no further discussion, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is the special ministerial item, which is 9A, the action on motion to reconsider the out... ...reject pre-suit settlement agreement regarding Bridgeport Heights River Approach.
Yeah, I wasn't really fully understanding why this was necessary. Can you tell us why this was necessary?
This was actually an item brought up by Commissioner Strickland.
Mayor, I brought this back up. It seemed like we had, we were a little chaotic at the end of the meeting last time. Also, the motion was made in the negative, not the affirmative, and we had no agenda briefing, therefore we didn't have a discussion as what the worst-case scenario would be, how we voted, and which way it went after that. So I just kind of wanted to bring it back up so that we would, we would be able to have a motion in the affirmative as to whether to approve or disapprove, and to be able, and I'm sure everybody had their opportunity during the agenda briefing, to find out what the worst-case scenario was when they spent their time with the city manager and city attorney Jagger. So that's why I brought it back up, so that we could not be as chaotic as we were at the end of that meeting. I also felt like, too, that I was kind of, without an agenda briefing, I thought it was just kind of a special meeting to hear what the residents had to say. I didn't realize we would be voting on it at that very moment. So I don't know which way we go from here about this. Maybe Mr. Jagger or the city manager could give us some direction as to what we should do.
Well, in addition to that, I think that some of the residents are hoping for a, some sort of a resolution that obviously we didn't arrive at. Obviously, that we did not arrive at, and so, um, I didn't really realize that we could do that and wasn't sure why this was here. But you want to tell us what the worst case or what your perspective is, is where we are, or do we just need to have a discussion?
Let me back up a little bit and talk a little bit about process here. So in order for this to proceed, Commissioner Strickland would need to make a motion to reconsider. It would need to be seconded. Obviously, we can discuss it as a board at that point. And I should point out that Robert's rules generally require that the motion made at the same meeting, it's always been the policy of this commission, to my knowledge, to allow a motion to reconsider at the next meeting. The motion, of course, has to be made by a person voting in favor of the underlying motion, which Commissioner Strickland was. So procedurally, you'll need to make a formal motion, it'll need to be seconded, and then we can take comment. There's kind of an outstanding issue as to whether or not we would be required to take public comment, and it kind of depends on where the conversation goes. If we get into new information, new evidence, then, then I would say we would, they would need to take public comment over again. If it's simply a re-vote, then public comment was had at the special meeting, and you would not need to, in my opinion.
All right. I make a motion to, however it's supposed to be.
Reconsider?
Yeah, to reconsider the vote on this issue, and the, once we do that, I'll make another motion that we vote in, you know, have a motion in the affirmative. Is that correct, a city attorney?
We'll take a vote on the motion to reconsider. If that's approved, at that point, you can re-address the original motion by way of amendment or restating it.
Okay. I'll make the motion we reconsider.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. We didn't need to vote on it, so...
I do not believe that that settlement was good for either the neighbors or the city itself. One clause kind of binded the city commission for perpetuity to have to consult with the property owners and their assignees in perpetuity before anything could be done. I do not believe we should or we can bind future commissioners' commissions to what this is doing. That's one point.
Well, before you make your points, we want to approve the motion so that we can really have a discussion.
Well, I do not think it is a, should be reconsidered because I think...
So you oppose reconsidering it?
Yes.
And Mayor, if I might add, just so we have a standard to sort of guide the discussion, a good rule of thumb on a motion to reconsider would be for you to consider on that motion, either new evidence, if there is any, or confusion in terms of the way the motion was made, or whether or not people understood what they were voting on.
Okay.
But the point is, we don't want to re-argue the main motion on the motion to reconsider.
Did we not also ask you to put a declaratory judgment in front of the court?
Yes, that has been filed. That was filed on Friday.
That was filed?
Yes.
Okay. Let us have our vote, and then we can discuss it. If it fails, it fails.
Came to a decision, and now we're going to not revisit the decision, but just clear up the process? We taking another vote again?
Reed, it allows us to have a discussion on the totality of the decision made. New evidence, I do think I have new evidence from hearing from residents or new thoughts from their perspective, and I do think that there was not a depth of clarification as to what we were voting on, maybe by all. So I think it's reasonable to reconsider, and we have a motion, and we have a second to reconsider. Okay?
Yes.
Any others? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries six one for reconsideration of the original motion. Okay. Commissioner, this is, you've brought this baby to us, and I don't disagree. It was one of the most conflicting votes that I've ever cast, one way or the other, on the commission.
Well, I would ask the city attorney to help me with, with the motion as to make the motion in the affirmative.
Sit down.
Well, we, we are reconsidering the original motion, so the original motion stands now. The original motion, according to my notes, was to reject the proposed settlement and proceed with the suit, and that was made by Commissioner Trager, I believe.
Mr. Brown, can you... No, no.
Can you, can you sit down and then...
Just fill out your form, and if public, okay.
Okay, then sit down.
We haven't forgotten. We haven't forgotten.
Sit down, sir.
Okay. Okay. So...
To make it in the affirmative, wouldn't it be to have a motion to approve the pre-suit settlement agreement?
That would be a way to make that motion in the affirmative, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to, to vote on the pre-suit settlement agreement for special warranty deeds and repeal the right-of-way vacation for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision River Approach.
Okay.
Is that too much?
It's not too much.
And I second that.
Okay. You have a motion, you have a second. I assure you, you will be allowed to speak. I promise you. You also have, but you made a motion, you made a second. I thought we should have a discussion because we're able...
Let me back up. I'm sorry. I may have missed what happened there. So did Commissioner Trager withdraw her motion or not? Because we had a motion on the floor.
I did make this motion.
I'm sorry?
I did not make this motion.
No, but, but the original motion is still on the floor. On the motion to reconsider, that brings back up the original motion. So now we have the original motion on the floor. You can make a motion to amend the previous motion, or Commissioner Trager can withdraw her previous motion, but the pending motion will be the original motion following the motion to reconsider.
My original motion was to reject the pre-suit settlement.
That's, that's correct. So if, you know, so you've got to either make a motion to amend that and vote on it, to amend the original motion and vote on that, or Commissioner Trager can withdraw her original motion.
I still want the motion to reject the pre-suit settlement.
So at this point, that motion is on the floor?
The motion continues to be on the floor, so we need to re-vote on that motion. Reject it, only to then consider a motion that's basically the same, but in a positive tone.
No, 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 because we got to, we've got to be careful here, because the motion pending is a motion to reject a proposed settlement. And frankly, if you want to state the emotion appropriately, as would be recommended for most boards, it should be stated in the affirmative, and that's probably why we're talking about it now. So the, the proper motion at this point should be a motion to amend Ms. Trager's motion.
I make a motion to reject that, this pre-suit settlement. That is a affirmative thing.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
We are voting to reject it. That is affirmative. That is not a negative.
I understand. Well, at this point, it's up to the remaining commissioners to determine if you'd like to make a motion to amend the original motion, in which case you can discuss it and vote on it.
Amended how?
The amendment would be to, as Commissioner Trager, I'm sorry, Commissioner Strickland has said, the amended motion, if you made this motion, would be to approve the settlement agreement.
But the motion was to reject the settlement agreement.
Well, you'd vote it down. If you want to reject the agreement, you voted down at that point.
So if she wants to keep the motion that she made at that meeting?
Right.
That motion can stand, and now we all know that we're voting on it?
Yes.
And now you go yea or nay from that same motion?
You, you...
You may not need to amend it because...
That's true. You could re-vote the same motion. That's your prerogative.
Who's the second on that motion?
Well, I'm, I'm going to reject the motion because I want to have a new discussion. I don't want to keep that motion anymore. We're reconsidering, and I just want to start over.
Exactly, exactly. That's what, that's what I was...
Yeah, but that's my point. I want to reject. So the motion stands. We're just reconsidering the original motion.
But if you reconsider it and vote on it, that would mean that you approved the agreement. So...
That's what got us here.
That's why we have to re, if we're going to restate that motion, you're going to need to, to do so.
All right.
Because otherwise, you'd be voting to approve the agreement, and I'm not sure that that's really what you intend either.
Okay. So the motion is to reject the pre-suit. That's the standing motion?
Yes.
The pre-suit settlement. So a vote in the affirmative would be to reject it, and a vote in the negative would be to not to reject it.
Okay.
Which, which would mean you're accepting it.
Yeah.
So, so if you want to revise that motion, it needs to be done through a motion to amend the original motion.
All right, can we have a motion to amend the original motion in an affirmative tone? Commissioner Trager, can you...
But I cannot see how that would be, because you have a motion to either reject or to keep. The motion is to reject.
This is, this is exactly why I brought this back up, because this is the way we ended that special meeting the other day. We were all running around chasing our tails and trying to figure out where we were.
How would you state the motion if you do not want the pre-suit settlement? How would you state that motion?
You would state the motion to approve the pre-suit settlement, and then you could vote against approving it.
Oh, I can't.
You can't even make the motion?
I can't make that motion, no. No way. That would mean that I would want...
It doesn't mean you want, you're making the motion so we can do the business.
Yeah.
You vote according to the way you want to vote. Just because you make a motion doesn't mean you have to vote that way. You do not have to vote affirmative for a motion that you make.
Mayor, let, let me ask you a question. Is your intent at this point, or maybe this is for the whole commission, is your intent to take additional testimony or evidence or comment?
My intent is to take additional testimony and comment tonight.
Okay.
I do want to have more testimony, so yes.
Well, you could also, you know, this is what, I forget what it was, Reed or Henry was saying, you know, if you wanted to keep exactly the wording of the motion, as long as we were clear what we were voting on, we could take public comment and re-vote on that motion, but you all have to understand that a no is a yes, and a yes is a no for the agreement, so. And that's why there was confusion to begin.
Right.
I'm assuming there was confusion. If there was confusion, that would have been.
Let me be clear. If you voted no two weeks ago, this week it would be yes on this?
Only if you re, no, it'd be the same, same as last time.
Same as last time.
If you want to reject the contract, then it would be a yes, and if you wanted to do the contract, it would be a no.
No, he said different. Yes, if he wants no, that's the second.
That's how you guys, yeah.
So what I would suggest is, since we know what the original motion is...
Excuse me. Since we know what the original, original motion is, can we just hear the discussion and the additional evidence and then just vote again with the clarity of the original motion, rather than all this amending?
That's possible. It's your prerogative.
Doesn't matter to me. I, I just want to get rid of the original and start over.
And if anybody else wanted to sign up to speak for this, speak now or forever hold your peace.
She won't, she won't even make the motion on it.
I will withdraw the motion. Will that do it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. She withdraws the motion. We have a second to withdraw the motion.
Second.
We have a second to withdraw the motion?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor withdrawing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is withdrawn.
Clean slate.
Clean slate.
Clean slate.
Tabula rasa.
There we go.
Clean slate, tabula rasa. Clean slate.
Very good.
Okay. So now, we're here to have a discussion of the original issue as it relates to Bridgeport's, Bridgeport Heights. Commissioner Strickland would like to make an affirmative motion related to Bridgeport Heights. I then would have liked to, after we get a second, open it up to the residents, because they have some other information that they want to share with us.
Right. I make a motion that we accept the pre-suit settlement agreement for the special warranty deeds and repeal of the right-of-way vacation for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision River Approach.
And I second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion on the floor. We will take comments from the citizens of Daytona Beach.
Okay, our first speaker is Randy Gray, and on deck is Colin Kizner. Kizner. Oh, he's in there.
Lee.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Brown's in there.
Lee Kizner.
Oh, because it says something different. Is it Lee?
Lee. My name is Randy Gray. I live at 2301 South Halifax Drive, Daytona Beach. We voted on it once, and it was seven zero to do a deck, file a deck act. We voted on it the second time, it was five to two. Now we're going to vote on it again. Is this the best of three, the best of five? I'm, I'm wondering where we're going with this, because it ain't, it's not, what you're doing is not right. And I'm going to give you a little history of that. I have looked at every picture that they presented out there. Every one of those people but the motorcycle has been accounted for. The one sitting on the seawall is the guy that trims the trees for, for the, one of the recipients that has permission to be there. He also fishes it. He's the same guy with the cast net. Has position, he, he has permission to be there. Now we've planted mangroves, so nobody can walk out there. Between me and my better half, we have 21 grandchildren, 21 of them. When they come to my house, the first thing they want to do, the ones that are old enough to go there, there's probably five of them that aren't, first thing they want to do is go to that, can we go to the river? Take us to the river, grandpa. Most of them have caught a fish there. We eat what we catch. They're so proud of what they do. But instead, you're going to block that off like they do right now. They've got mangroves. There's no way to get on there. It's fenced off. The whole thing, you can't get to the water. Go look at it yourself. You couldn't get there. There's none of my grandkids that can go down there to a deeded access that I've been deeded forever, that you guys mysteriously, mysteriously, you guys have given it away without any, any proper protocol on, on your agendas that you, you guys set forth on, on the procedure on how to give, and, and there wasn't one of them. Sarah set up here and mopped the floor with it. Now we're going to vote again because he don't understand, he don't understand, or he, or you're getting bad mojo from somebody. And, and I'm going to tell you what, one of the grandkids has cerebral palsy. She's 10 years old. She works harder to walk down there than most of us, I'll include myself, do in a week. And you're going to take that away from her. You're going to rip her heart out. Well, I'm going to tell you something, I'm not going to stand for it, because I've already discussed, I will spend every college dime that I've set aside for those 21 kids to make this right, and it will be made right, or, or it'll be the end. I, I'll spend it all. I'll spend my lifetime of work to prove what happened was wrong. So you guys go ahead and do what you want to do, because you're going to do it anyway. You've just proved that to me. And I'm not going to bring this little girl up here and use her as a pawn, which I contemplated doing that. I'm not going to do that, because she's better than that.
Our next speaker is Lee Kizner, and on deck is Dan Stone.
Well, we understand that you might be upset, but I, I don't think that that was even necessary. We, we want to solve the problem, and that's all that we want to do.
We want to solve the problem and that's all that we want to do. Mr. Kinsner?
My name's Lee Kinsner. I live at 2318 Halifax, or South Peninsula, confused here. It's hard to make a proposal for an alternate settlement in our three minutes that we're allowed to do. We have ideas and we're not opposed to sharing them with everybody as I've shared them with a couple of you already. The things that we have a problem with, with the settlement that was presented is that there's no access to the water. Mr. Jagger, you said that we would have access to the water, but as you can see from the pictures that I shared with you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Trager and Commissioner Strickland, it's fenced off. It's been fenced off for two weeks. Our access has been denied. And now, over the weekend, since last week's meeting when the vote was taken, there have been mangrove starter plants planted above the water line all the way across in what would be a conservation easement where now you can't access the water. And the true motive has shown now of why they wanted that abandoned. They want to take away every reason that you would have to go down there so they can incorporate it into their backyard. And one of the neighbors, they called the police on the other day, on the Fourth of July, and the police department went to his house and said, if you go down there again, you're going to be trespassed. And he lives in Bridgeport Heights. And that's the truth. If you give it away and accept that settlement, you can't build a boardwalk to the water with a handrail on it so somebody doesn't fall. There's no vertical building without asking them permission. And you guys shouldn't have to ask them permission. It's city property. Why you got to ask two private citizens if you can put a garbage can out there? I mean, it's absurd. So, we just want water access and no special privilege or rights for anybody else. They can drive to their driveway, we don't care. Make Halifax, make it called River Approach Way that goes to the end of the driveways, they can drive on it. And as I said before, if you want to put any kind of parking, as they parked two vehicles there all weekend, this past weekend, but they don't want parking, put a handicap space and loading and unloading something at the end of the pavement, put your bollards, if you want to delineate with fence and signs, go ahead, but give us water access. That's what we want. And we're willing to negotiate that stuff, but a settlement is not having it force-fed to you. This is what we want? Okay, well, we don't like that deal. Too bad, that's the deal. You got to take it. We don't like that deal. Can we come up with another deal? I talked to Mr. Tofanio the other day. He said he doesn't have a problem with me going down and accessing the river, but it's blocked.
So, let me ask you a question. You know, I don't know if this is, you know, because he, the previous gentleman stormed out of here, I think rightfully, he's...
I got called names the other day.
Let me ask you a question. Because he stormed out, I don't know if he's in concurrence with what you're proposing and what you said to me, which was very simple, that they just want access to the water. So if the city built a dock to the water...
Boardwalk.
A boardwalk to the water.
That goes into the water, maybe six inches. It would be this tall at high tide. You could step right off of it. It wouldn't be a large step and keep the mangroves trimmed from in front of the boardwalk. If they're on the side of the boardwalk, cool.
Mangroves are good for the fish and it's good for the environment. And the conservation easement which they've planted would then be able to continue to be, exist on each side.
And I can't say that everybody would agree to that, but I think that's a pretty good reasonable settlement where two people on this side settle somewhere in the middle, not over here, not over here, a settlement in the middle.
Do you all follow the suggestion that he's making?
But the agreement, the way it is now, the settlement agreement that's proposed to us, it stinks.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going back on my original rejection of that personally.
You know what, I mean...
So, that for me is not a, I don't think that's...
But that's what we're going to vote on whether to accept it or not.
But that, you know, I think, you know, if these three stay where they are and I don't think...
I hope everybody...
Okay, but the point is, I want a resolution.
Me too, sir.
And have always wanted a successful resolution to this. But you all are not united to tell us whether this is a successful resolution.
I think if that proposal came through like that and was presented to everybody, I think everybody kind of, like I said, I can't speak individually for them, I can't consult with them, but I think that's a pretty good idea. And I would support that.
Okay, you would support it. You've already filed the deck act, which he seemed to not understand that that already transpired. What does that mean if we now wanted to try to ask them and offer this settlement?
So, in terms of the lawsuit, we can grant extensions to file a responsive pleading to the other side. We can kind of put that on hold while we continue negotiations. So, and ultimately, if the case did settle now, we're in court, if it did settle, we would just file a voluntary dismissal with prejudice. So, there's a way out of the lawsuit if the parties can agree on an outcome.
So, do we have to be involved in that or can the parties communicate with each other? Do we have to insert ourselves in it?
Well, I mean, the parties are you as a commission and the neighboring landowners. So you would by necessity have to be involved in that conversation.
Well, I am in favor, you know, as I've always been in favor of trying to come to a solution that allows these people to be guaranteed access to the water because what they described now doesn't seem like they're trying to give them access.
You saw the picture of it. My wife took that on the Fourth of July.
And that makes me happy that, you know, we did what we could to protect them, okay? Because it seems like they wanted that easement to grow the mangroves and then you can't walk down there without it. So...
Are you stating that since last week, that someone has gone and planted mangroves across the entire perimeter of that easement?
You've been down there, sir.
I've been there many times.
The beach area is, a couple of weeks ago, there was orange sand dune fence, we call it snow fence, well, I call it snow fence because I'm from Ohio originally. But there was sand dune fence there and we've moved it out and you could see that last week on the... Since then, there are at least a dozen orange flags where mangroves have been plated, planted in the sandy beach area in that eight-foot, nine-foot wide stretcher, however wide it is. However wide it is. Mangrove plants. They've put plants with snakes in the ground all over the place. You could walk through there, but you would be kept away. So... I didn't plant them.
I'm going to show the picture that you sent us.
You need me for anything else?
Uh, no, other than the fact that...
If you do, yeah.
What you guys, you know, if we direct staff to continue to have a further negotiation, you all need to concur that you would be in agreement with this.
I think if it's governed by the city, let's be honest, if, when it comes back to the city, because that property is going to come back to the city, you're going to make it a park. And the hours are going to be restricted because it's going to be a park, like every other park. There ain't nothing anybody in Daytona Beach is going to be able to do about that. It's going to be a park. I understand that. It should be a park. It'd been a park without any kind of restrictions, but that's what it's served as, as the park for everybody in the neighborhood, walks down, the kids go fishing, people have used it for kayaking, you know, riding bikes, teaching kids how to ride bikes so they fall in the grass instead of on the pavement. I mean, that's what it is.
Okay.
It's a park. Does it need a gazebo? Not necessarily. That's up for you all to decide. Garbage can, probably. Handrail on a boardwalk, probably. But those are vertical buildings that are listed, or vertical structures that are listed in that settlement.
Okay.
Vertical.
I have a question. So this boardwalk that you're asking for, it would start where that orange sand was? And it would go out into the water?
I don't know how far you all want to make it or how far is people to make it. That's not my field of expertise. But I've seen boardwalks in the area where they go right into the water, last board touches the water at high tide. At high tide.
Yeah.
And then at low tide, you know, and I think that realistically, you'd be able to trim that four feet wide because that's what it's used for, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm not, I'm not super smart about the mangrove laws, but I think if it's for an alternate use, you can trim that area in front of it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Tell me again, when were these mangroves planted?
Last weekend.
Okay.
That's, to me, that's problematic because it seems like the other party isn't acting in good faith, if that is in case what happened. Very, very...
I got called some choice words when I was walking a dog the other day. In not good faith.
All right. Let the manager weigh in.
I just want the commissioners to be aware, whether, whatever decision you make, and also this is for the Bridgeport Heights community as well, when this becomes a park, it is open to everyone. It's placed on all of our sites. And so I just want us to be clear that we're going to really have to focus on what we do in the community also. So I don't want you to have under the impression that it will be known throughout the city that it is a park in that small space for the community. So I want you to be aware when we start talking about putting out docks and stuff, there will be associated costs that other, everyone will be coming to the area for fishing or whatever. So I just want to make sure we are, I communicate to you all that when we make it a park for leisure services, that we're going to make sure that we treat it just like a park with the signage. So there may be, I understand their concerns about giving easements and things of that nature, but whatever our rules and regulations that you all have put in place for our parks will be the same thing that we put on this River Approach. I'll let you all change that as a commission. So I just, whatever the park is for Daisy Stockton or for Lennox Park will be the same rules assigned for those.
Okay. I don't know that the other party will accept this and then you'd have to proceed with what you're already doing. So, the question is, and I think that's it, I don't think we have any more questions. We will show the picture of what he's referring to.
I just want you all...
Just so you guys know, this is a picture of what it now looks like and those are mangroves on the other side that have been planted. And so when you talk about an easement, an environmental easement, if that's what you were going to plant, no one would have been able to go down there through that because that's the environmental easement.
And that's what that agreement was.
Yeah.
And that's why I say that you should vote no on that agreement. We can come up with a different agreement that's better for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you. Well, it's not ours, it's theirs to do what they choose to do with now. So, do we, do we want...
We have additional speakers.
Okay. All right, well, we'll listen to the rest of the speakers.
Next speaker is Jessica Gao and on deck is Dan Stone.
Good evening, Jessica Gao, Copco Law Firm, 149 South Bridget Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida, attorney for the property owner, although they are not in attendance tonight. Just want to shed a little background and then have a general comment. Everything you've heard tonight is true. At the special meeting, you saw that we've reported to DEP that the mangroves were removed. They were replanted over the weekend in accordance with what FDU said to replant the mangroves that were trampled and removed when the construction fencing was removed. So, we're just following DEP guidance there. Leaving the meeting, the special meeting, I guess the confusion for the property owners and us as the attorneys is what in the agreement the residents do not like specifically. It's been in public record since May, we haven't gotten comments. The agreement authorizes a boardwalk and pedestrian pathway, so I think a handrail is not a vertical building improvement, which is prohibited under the agreement. And we really heard two things. One, that the city should not give away their police power by restricting uses. I think the uses are pretty similar to what you see in the parks. And also the city restricts its police powers a little bit every day with license agreement, easements, things like that. So we think that these are reasonable. If this goes to suit, you know, the question before is, you know, there may be a lawsuit either way. There's a pending deck action. For the property owners, and like Mike said and I'll say, I will not be litigating that, that's not what I do. But there's a question even on the baseline of the plot, that this was dedicated to the public forever. The agreement, you know, says, that the plot says, all streets, avenues, roadways, alleyways, and parks are shown thereon to the use of the public forever. Then approach, approach isn't listed. So if this goes to suit, one of the arguments is, did the city ever own it? Was it dedicated to the public? Who owned it? What are the damages? What are the rights? It's messy. And I think that's why we hope that we brought forward a rational settlement agreement. If the concern is the boardwalk and access to the water, I think the agreement contemplates that. I think you can trim mangroves to allow for a pathway. They replanted in accordance with DEP guidance and if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
So you're saying that those are replanted because DEP told them that they had to replant those?
After the video that we saw of them being removed and trampled.
We didn't see the video.
Okay. And it's your position that a path for an approach would be approved?
Right. It's specifically called out as permitted.
As permitted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Do you all have any other questions for Jessica?
Thank you.
Because for me, it's, we've got one or two things. I really prefer not to build a dock. I prefer that we have a stated agreement that this will be a walkway that is maintained for access to the river. And if they could agree to that, then I think I would agree to that settlement as a, for my vote. But they didn't really, they wanted that, this easement, environmental easement, that they wanted to mandate, which doesn't seem like it's necessary. Why is that environmental easement necessary? Because it appears now as though that's being put in place to grow out and restrict their access to it. So, we'll listen to the rest of the residents and then we'll vote.
Our next speaker is Dan Stone and on deck is Frederick Brown.
40 South Halifax. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for filing the declaratory action. I think tonight's discussion is getting the cart a little bit above in front of the horse. The declaratory action will give standing. Probably mediation will have to occur under the court's supervision to come up with a settlement that everybody can live to. Part of our challenge with the prior agreement was we weren't at the table until sometime in June. The, go get a couple more seconds, until sometime in June. The agreement was negotiated between the city and the two people that you gave this property to. We had ideas. You heard them from Lee. We're not here to be unreasonable, but we want to be heard. We want to be at the table to help figure out the best thing for everybody. We don't want to limit them not to be able to go to their house on a driveway. We, if they want to park there, fine. We want to park there too. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Sarah Metz wrote each of you a letter today. It's detailed. It talks about the issues that are in the agreement that are non-starters. It also talks about what we think would be a reasonable way forward. But I think you need a little time. I think you, following the action that's filed, gets people to the table, the court can provide a little bit of oversight, but I think there's room for us to figure out a way where we can have the access that you heard Randy so passionate about. And I agree with you, it should be a dirt access. Putting an artificial structure there, why? It always was a dirt access. We walked through it. Mangroves didn't grow there and they don't need to grow there in the future. The court will require parties to get together and talk. We're really opposed to these settlements. You're giving away rights that belong to this elected group of officials, to property owners. Why are those two owners any more important than me as another law order in the same subdivision? We should all be at the table and you should listen collectively and then come to a decision that works for everybody. We did try to, and there's a letter in the file where we tried to reach out to the other side stating the same kinds of things that Lee did last summer. I don't think it was even provided to you folks last fall. When you saw the letter they wrote to us as if they were trying to be above board finding the right path forward. Language is ambiguous in that agreement. It really needs to go. And the conservation easement is death to everybody because they're, what they're trying to do is use the state law to protect mangroves to ultimately from getting, and that's, I had the talk about doing the right thing and it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. Well, tonight's...
And let's everyone take a pause in a moment and to remember to turn off and silence their cell phones and wireless devices. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Steve Abel.
Dinoi Christian Ridge, Daytona Beach. Some key points were brought up. I've also once again heard a lot of rhetoric from the lawyers involved in this. A lot of rhetoric, very few facts. I was the one who took that picture, by the way. I've been down there. I've watched what happened. Those mangroves were intentionally planted with this, the sole purpose of blocking the public access. That land has been deeded for 90... That land has been deeded for 96 years to the public forever. Citizens of Daytona, if you're listening, this is what can happen. The previous staff was browbeaten by the previous manager into simply responding to each of the requests on this, providing you information to make a proper vote. The simple response was, "Thank you," meaning they acknowledged it. The city staff did not do due diligence. This is going to leave you open for lawsuit. And like Randy, okay, I'm not a rich man, but I'm willing to stand on my rights. I volunteered during the Vietnam War to defend my country and I will do everything I can now to defend the rights of the citizens of Daytona Beach. This property was deeded to the public forever in 1926. That has not changed. That should not change. The city was given a bill of goods. You weren't told the truth by the law firm. I had to listen to 24 minutes of misrepresentation. And again, I just heard it again. The people that ripped out the, the, were the Tofanios. They tore every bit of them out. They piled up on the road. And yes, they did get caught and they got fined. So they had to replace the ones on their property. This property has been public access for 96 years. There was no mangroves there because it was a simple walkway so you could go fishing, so you could go shrimping, so you could launch your canoes. And I, do I need to remind you what the Florida repairing rights? I've done all the research on this, okay? And I've read it before. But the state of Florida guarantees the citizens the right to view the water, the right to use the water, the right to access the water. That means that includes ingress and egress. That includes putting wharf in the, if need be. And we've talked about that possibility. That includes boats. That includes bathing in the river. And that includes fishing. And that's guaranteed under state law. It's very simple. It's all there. I, I have the rest of the information. I've read it in the past. The point is this. This is public land. You were given an, a false application with false facts and it was allowed to go through. Therefore, it should be rejected. And on top of that, this, there's a question of where that land was deeded. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Steve Abel and on deck is John Nicholson.
All right, then.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I thought we had a resolution at the meeting. Things have popped up again and it's only more confusing. I believe Bob said that they were allowed to build a structure, a walkway. Now, the mayor says he doesn't want one, but it doesn't matter. They have access. They've always had access. All right? So that is a non-issue. If they want to go to the water, both owners said, "Fine. Not a problem." All right? That's not an issue. But when they bring it up, they're bringing up something that's already been resolved. All right? If I remember when I walked the property a month ago or so and the pictures, remember the guy throwing with the orange bucket, throwing the fish in the water? That was on the left-hand side. And they had said that's where somebody had trampled the mangroves. The photograph that you just saw is on the right-hand side. So did they replant where they had trampled the mangrove? Because that was brought up at the last meeting. Remember that we talked about the trampling of the mangroves? Is that where they replanted? If they did, then that's fine. That's what we expected them to do. If it is on a different location, which doesn't make sense, on the right-hand side, remember the muddy area? You could access that muddy area. So unless we know exactly where they're talking about, I don't know if that mangrove went all the way across. It didn't appear to be in the photographs last week. This photograph shows a very tiny section, maybe three, five feet wide. It was much wider, both the old mangroves that were trampled and the location. So whatever we're going to do, those mangroves could be popped right out. They are not established by law. They didn't grow there naturally. Somebody put them there. If you want to take them out now, you're free to do so. And they can walk. It's not, uh, the law doesn't say non-natural. Those were planted by somebody and they can be taken up. The thing I'm most worried about is lawsuit. That went right over everybody's head last week. If we do this, whatever it is that Bob did, we open up and if the court decides in their favor, we have to pay. Right now, it's, it's a wash. If we pass this, it's a wash. They don't get any money, basically. We don't get any money. We pay some court costs, et cetera, so moving, whatever, very minor. If they get it and we have to buy it, remember, um, Enni Pile? That little land right next to the building we own? You thought it'd be about $100,000? Well, what would that land be on the river? $500,000? If you ask me, it would be $100,000.
Can't build a house on it, man.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Uh, Marjorie Johnson, Beach Street. Uh, I'm here tonight to address the fact that this city of Daytona Beach created this problem by giving away this property when we were not here. So it is your job to get it fixed so that we can have access to this property at all time. How would you like for somebody to give away your property? And then you're not there to speak on it. So we, the residents, was not here when you did this and we would like for you to have, we would like to have access to that property at all time, 24 hours a day. It's a public park and we should have access to it. And this, you all supposed to be here to represent us. So you should have never given away in the first place. If you hadn't given it away, we wouldn't be here even speaking on it. We, the taxpayer residents, are very, very unhappy about the fact that you gave away our public property. And this is a disgrace that you would do something like this because, uh, public property should be just that, public, so you can have access to it all the time. We're taxpayers and we want to make that happen. So why should we, the residents, have to suffer because you all made a mistake? And you did it when we wasn't here during the time of the virus. And that was very sneaky and that was very wrong. So I'd like to say to you tonight, whatever decisions you make, you make sure that we have access to that property. We are taxpayers. You gave it away and you did the wrong thing when you did it. You need to correct it. You don't want nobody coming to our own property. And I don't want nobody to come and bother me from getting on my property and putting out mangroves and all that. That's a sign of disrespect. We want you to do your job that we are paying you to do. Whatever you have to do to make it happen, we want you to make it happen. And so you have an attorney here. He should have told you at the time that this was wrong because you cannot sit around and give away public property because we want to have access to it at all times. So I say to you tonight, make it happen. Have access to that property. Remove the mangrove trees. Let those, those people that you sneak and you gave that property know that we are going to have access to our property. And do your job. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is Mark Kowalski.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I think one of the things I've been hearing, I've been listening to a lot of these conversations. And I think one of the problems is that the residents want a seat at the table, but they don't have a representative. So I'd like a seat at every table because I got a lot of opinions to share. But you can't, we've only had, heard from four speakers, four residents so far, from the neighborhood. You can't have an open neighborhood discussion and come to an agreement. So if the neighborhoods, if the neighbors who are so passionate about this want a seat at the table, they should probably hire an attorney. And, you know, Sarah Metz speaks, came and spoke, but she didn't represent, wasn't, I don't know what's the legal term for it, she wasn't bound by, for representing them. So how can you, you know, if you agree to what sounds reasonable, we're going to put a little, we're going to keep the water access, get rid of the mangroves, and then another guy shows up and says, "I don't want that. I want something else and I don't want trash cans." Somebody else says, "I want parking." So I think they need to come with legal representation if they want a seat at the table. I think that would be very helpful in this conversation. Because right now, if you do the deck action, it's the city against the two property owners. And there's, the city has to guess at what the residents want out of this. So I think there's been enough guessing going on here. Um, I think the other thing to kind of separate the wheat from the chaff a little bit would be helpful. Right now, the people own the property. So if they wanted to put up a six-foot PVC fence across the front of it, they could. And it's not, how do I want to say this? It is slightly unreasonable to be angry at them if they do that because it's their property. The settlement is trying to get it so that it's not their property, so that they can't do that. So if you don't like the property being blocked, then working towards a settlement is probably a good way to do it. And again, circling back to my original point, getting to a settlement where the residents feel they've been heard, they need, I would suggest they hire legal representation so that they can have a seat at the table in a cohesive, coherent voice. That's the end. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Kowalski and on deck is Doyle Lewis. Mr. Stone already spoke.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay. What the mayor said?
I've got three minutes. Go ahead. You know, normally, you know, I did it before. I'm, I let y'all, I really want y'all to get yourselves united with a voice. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dan Stone, again, still the same address, 2240 South Halifax. You've heard a lot of conflicting ideas tonight. We do have rights. There's a deeded right, this property, to have access. One of us was denied that right. I think even your counsel has said that in the past. So it, it is fair to say that we represent ourselves at the table with a single spokesman. We're happy to do that. However, I'm not sure we'd be invited to the table. We have been excluded. We were even, not even permitted to make a full presentation at the public meeting. Sarah asked to be able to put slides up and do everything like the city did and the other side. We were denied. So we want to be treated fairly. Two of us have engaged Sarah, so she will be representing at least our interest. We've written to all 180 owners of property within the subdivision. 60 of those signed a letter saying, "We want to pursue our rights of access and we want to continue that." So it's not just two or three people. There is some unanimity here. Yes, there's slight divergence with respect to the ideas of, of how to do this or how to come to an agreement. But essentially, we want to agree. We just want what we had, what you gave away, we want it back. We think the right thing to do is let the declarative action things sit, let this discussion take place under the auspices of a court. It can be finalized amicably outside the court and presented to the court as this is what we want. But there's a whole bunch in this existing agreement that is just awful. It's awful for you as a board. It's awful for every citizen in this city and it's awful for the people who own lots in the subdivision. Thank you.
Okay. Our final speaker is Doyle Lewis.
Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, Florida, United States. I've been in situations like this too many times. I've retired from it. Like I said, anybody can make a complaint. Anybody with money can buy almost anything. Been there, done that. I think the city needs to grow a backbone and say it's Daytona Beach and we kind of run into a little bit here because the citizens should work with the officials of Daytona Beach. And that's a very strong statement. But that has to happen. It looks like a new survey actually needs to be done on that particular property, depending on how last time it was surveyed. That might settle some things. As far as marking anywhere where a walkway can go, that's the reason why you should probably do a new survey, which will cost a little bit. Anything that's above ground, you have to have a structure permit. But doing a survey can be in-ground and mark a walkway. It can also affect all the natural growing plants. It's amazing to me how so many neighbors can just act like they own somebody else's property. It's called jumping the fence. Whenever you see the neighbor leave, you go look at their property, which happens a lot. So start eliminating the complaints. Write down the complaints and eliminate each one. And then when you get to the last one, eliminate it too. Or be replaced in your elected official office desk and chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doyle Lewis. Do your job. The citizens of Daytona Beach should listen to the commission and stop complaining. Thank you.
Okay. That was my final speaker.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. I've talked to a few of these citizens on the phone. I've asked them, what do they not like about the settlement? I haven't heard one thing. Do they, can they take their kayaks down there?
Yes.
Can they take their canoes down there?
Yes.
Can they fish down there?
Yes.
Can they ride a bike down there?
Yes.
Can they walk down there?
Yes.
Can they swim down there?
Yes.
Okay. So the only thing that I've heard that I can see here, I think we're compromising, both parties are compromising. The only thing I see is that small piece of driveway, which their driveway comes out in front of. Personally, I have a driveway like that with my neighbor that comes out in front of my driveway. I wouldn't want people blocking my driveway either. I mean, they still can get down there. That's the only thing I see different. The other thing, only thing, only thing I see is we make it a park and they have to go by our rules. I have not seen anything that is going to be different than what they could do before, unless someone can tell me something and I've spoke to them a million times about this.
Sir? Sir, there-
Shh, shh, shh.
No speaking from the-
So, but that's all I have to say.
I have a question. So in, in the picture that we saw earlier, where exactly is that in reference to right here? Is this in someone's yard? Is this on one of the person's property on the, the right or the left side? Because Stacy and I are trying-
Jessica, can you answer that?
Trying to figure out-
I can't see the picture. I can't.
Oh, well, all right. Go ahead. Brett?
I can tell you this on the stoppage part.
Come to the mic, please.
Okay, is this in the-
Come, come to the mic.
Right. And I, I do want to add to my-
That is, that is-
Hang on, Mr. Brown, one second, one second. I did say yes to all those. One thing I don't know is, is if we've got, if there's a path to get there without disrupting the mangrove. So I'm assuming that there is an existing path to get to the river. And if that's the fact, then of course, all those things are possible, swimming, fishing, kayaking, all those things are possible.
And the agreement that we have, they are allowed to get down there, correct?
The agreement would allow it as long as they don't interfere with the mangrove.
Correct. But there was a picture that I, I can't remember because I've seen so many pictures. There was a picture where the mangroves were destroyed and where I saw that was kind of like in front of the, the person's house and they had a dock that went down there? Am I correct?
That is correct. That's on the north side. This is on the south side. There have never been mangroves in 96 years. There have never been mangroves there.
Okay.
On the north side-
That's what I'm trying to get to the-
Right. The north side was the part that they were instructed to replant. That is the end of the Tofanio property at 2314.
So this is on the other side?
This is on where the public land is. This is up against the France property line.
Okay. Can you still walk down there?
That's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to- That's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to find out.
There's a fence there now, and then they, they just artificially planted these and said, "Oh, now we got mangroves, you can't step in." It was done intentionally to block.
And Mrs. Gao, Mrs. Gao is saying that's incorrect.
It's not incorrect. I mean, I've been there. I got more pictures, I want to see them.
I do.
Yeah.
I actually do want to see them.
I do too.
We can't, we can't.
Can you put them on, uh, put them on there?
Send them around to staff.
Yeah.
Okay. Who do I send them to?
Send them to staff. They'll, they'll upload them. Okay. Jessica, do you have a comment? That refutes something?
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, can you move and she'll, so she can, okay.
All right, move over to the side. This is, this is really not how I like to run a meeting. And y'all, and y'all, hold it. And y'all know that. Let's go.
Jessica Gao, Cobbleaw from 149 South Richard Avenue.
Go ahead. I'm not talking about that.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Mr. Brown, can you correct me? There are two instances of mangrove removal we're looking at. The one that was on private property is when the Tufanios first moved in, they trimmed mangroves illegally, they were fined, and it was remediated. We discussed that at the special meeting. During the special meeting, ooh, we have our PowerPoint. During the special meeting, there was a video played that showed when you go down the approach, in the approach, on the left-hand side, there was construction fencing put up to protect young mangroves. It was ripped out, they were trampled. We reported that to DEP. DEP said replant in that location. That is where it's replanted, in the approach.
Right, and I saw the pictures. There's still a walkway down there, correct?
I don't have the aerial shot. I haven't been out there since the replanting, but.
Is there a walkway down there or not?
I know where they replanted. I don't know if there's a way around beyond that.
That's something we need to know.
That's something I need to know.
There is a walkway for them to walk, walk down because.
If you, I don't know, the residents.
That's something we do need to know, if there's a walkway down.
If there's a walkway.
Absolutely.
Okay, I agree that they need access, but what we have, and what we are here to vote on, is whether we are approving or rejecting the settlement.
And that's going.
And the settlement states that they can.
So what picture is this?
That's the walkway.
There's a small, it's a small portion.
That's the little pave area between the drives.
And then there's a small portion to the left.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, when you walk down the left, is that where, and go down, is that where the mangroves were planted?
On the left.
On the left side?
So they still have room to walk then?
No.
You have to step on top of the mangroves.
No, you have to step.
So they, they planted them all the way across?
All the way across.
All the way across, that's what they're saying.
That's where I need to see, the picture.
Okay, well, if you guys, look, we can, we can postpone this until you go down and look at, look at it.
Okay.
If that's what you like, I, I really am okay with that. So everyone goes down in there, everyone sees it.
Okay.
And then we can come back and bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Okay, all right. We need a motion to continue.
Motion to continue.
Second.
I'll take the motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Strickland.
And Mayor, we'll continue this to the next meeting.
Continue this to the next meeting. We can go down and have another 45-minute conversation. All the legal action continues forward or no?
Oh, well, yes. I may grant them an extension to answer because they only have 20 days to respond in order to allow this, but I'll report on that at the next meeting.
Okay. Yes. And we would like staff to go and take their own photographs so that we will be able to present that properly and accurately from all angles for the next meeting.
And with the drone, please. Some drone footage.
Yeah, I think drone footage would be good. Okay.
Will this settlement be negotiated or will it be?
One, one person at a time.
Sorry.
And we'll, we'll allow for a conversation with DEP. Any other persons or individuals? Commissioner Kent, too?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
I'm fine.
Commissioner Traeger?
Will this settlement agreement will be continued as is or will it be tweaked? What we're not.
Well, the actual agreement, I believe, is what you're asking. And actually, I was going to ask for additional direction on that as well. Shall I continue negotiating with Cobb Cole to see if we can meet some of the residents' concerns? Or would you prefer just to leave the agreement as it is for your next meeting? I can give you some options if you like, based on negotiations, or we can just come back with the exact same.
I definitely think the neighbors have to be included into this agreement. I also think that it should not be in perpetuity up to future commissions and future landowners of that property. I do not see any thing that we got that that piece of property had been anything but a river approach, that it had not been actually taken care of by the city but by the neighbors, also that it had been used for, what they say, 96 years by the public as a general use. That, I think, should be given some precedence also. Therefore, I do not think the agreement as it stands should continue. I think it has to be tweaked.
So I think that means that you can continue to have discussion, and if they have other options to bring to the table for the next meeting, that will be reasonable. Is that agreed upon?
But I do think the neighbors have to be included. That was a missing piece of the puzzle, that the city was represented, the property owners were represented, the neighbors were not.
And I should say that we have been extending Attorney Metz, courtesy of being involved in phone conferences with the attorneys for the property owners. She sent an email today to all the commissioners with some revisions to the agreement, so I intend to follow up with her as well.
I think that's sufficient to continue it along those lines.
Yes.
You know, unless they, if they want to hire someone to speak for all of them, they can. Otherwise, I think that's sufficient.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We have any other comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of continuing, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. All right, let's move on.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is our public hearings. Item number 10A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, 1500 Tamoka Farms Road, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.318, 7 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 46.8 plus or minus acres of property located on, at 1500 Tamoka Farms Road, north of First Baptist Parkway and west of Tamoka Farms Road, from Level 1 residential and potentially environmentally sensitive to Level 2 residential and potentially environmentally sensitive, amending the future land use element neighborhood U to restrict the maximum residential density for the property, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
And just for the record, I just, the only speaker I had was Rob Merrill, and that was only for questions. Okay. We're going to move on to item 10B is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to 1500 Tamoka Farms Road PD Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the 1500 Tamoka Farms Road Plan District Agreement, formerly known as Tamoka Independent Living Plan District Agreement, to revise maximum permitted density, multifamily complex development criteria, and completion schedule, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
Well, we have a motion from Commissioner Kent, too, and a second from Commissioner May.
Again, I have Mr. Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions. Merrill?
All right. Is this to increase the density, Mr. Merrill?
Rob Merrill, for the record, 149 South Ridge with Cobb Cole. The answer is yes, sort of. So this was originally approved as an adult living facility, and we've changed it now to a traditional multifamily. So it's going to have more density than it would have before? The answer is yes.
So before, it was, it was for like seniors?
It was.
Senior community? Now you've changed it?
Correct.
Now you want to increase the density?
Exactly. And so, Commissioner Strickland, what I would tell you is, I always, when we talk about density, we'll think of it as a bad thing. Density is not the enemy when you're in a place where you have infrastructure in place. I think your staff has gone through the exhaustive process of making sure that, in this case, works. And the planning board, same thing. So we're here, I think, telling you, this is the right place for this amount of density. If that's where you're leaning.
And the increase in density will increase the profitability of the project, correct?
Yeah, you know. I don't know that necessarily true.
Okay.
But I'm not sure the, where you're heading.
Well, it was, it was.
We just had the Fourth of July, and this is kind of America.
I know, I enjoyed the Fourth of July. I hope you did, too. My point is, is that we arbitrarily or just automatically, when we change, increase in density, obviously, if you're going to have more apartments, more houses, more whatever, it will increase the profitability of the, the project. However, it will also increase more traffic and have more use of the infrastructure. Therefore, it could affect those that are around it and the residents of this city with, with the requirement for more traffic and those kinds of things. I was just asking the question.
No, you're, you're raising good points. I think those, those points that you make can be said about any project that comes along, for sure. And in this case, we've had neighborhood meetings, we've had several public hearings, and nobody has objected. We know the neighbors next door, you know? So this is a project where I think the neighbors have welcomed the density and the, and the development to come. It's the right place for it. We are going to be tested for concurrency, I think you understand fully, as it relates to water and sewer infrastructure, as it relates to transportation impacts. We have our transportation consultant here, he can answer all the questions you have about that. We are going to be going through the more detailed concurrency review process as we go through the site plan approval, which we are now going through. So all those questions are going to be answered. If the answer is no, or the answer is, here's what you need to pay to make sure that you're paying your share of it, we will. We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
This is the zoning stage.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill, half, this land is partially already cleared, too, correct?
It is, and it actually has some wet areas in the back that we're preserving. So if you go directly west from this, eventually you hit the Tamoka River. So, and the First Baptist Church property runs along the edge of the river, you know, and across ISB, so.
Okay.
The answer is yes. Some of it's cleared and some of it is not cleared.
Okay. And this is the property that they were thinking about maybe doing some cottages as well?
Well, so that.
Did they change?
No, we're not doing the cottages.
You're not doing cottages?
Yeah, and so a lot of these, these PDs, we've left that option because that thing, the cottage idea seems to be bringing up like mushrooms everywhere, so we left it in there. But that's not what we're planning to do at this point.
And it was annexed for rezoning in 2018? Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Thanks, everybody.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. We have any other questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 10C, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, INA Group Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the lands of Atlantic Code to rezone 225.2 plus or minus acres of property located east of and adjacent to the city's municipal stadium and south of and adjacent to the city's water, water and wastewater treatment plant from SFR 5, Single Family Residential, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the INA Group Plan District Agreement to allow for a 352-unit single-family residential subdivision subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Let me have some comments and thoughts about this and some concerns.
Okay, I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant.
Jessica's here. You all know where this is?
This is, is this the property that you guys will pay, be helping pay for the Dunn Extension?
We're dedicating the right-of-way for the Dunn Extension.
Dunn Extension, thank you.
And that's an important.
Absolutely.
Part of the equation to alleviating the stress that is anticipated to increase on And I think that's, that's, the right-of-way is important so that, can you explain why that's important?
Absolutely, and I'm sorry, wish I didn't say, for the record, Jessica Gao, Cobb Cole Law Firm, 149 South Richard Avenue. This property is very unique in that, over the years, as you've seen development come into the LPGA corridor, you've seen, and you can, on this map, too, right above, well, not this map, the map I see, the future land use map, areas of dedication of Dunn Avenue that go kind of up to the north orientation on the screen, and then pops out to LPGA. As we all know, it ends now at, you know, by Tamoka Farms, by the auto mall, that area. So this property allows for dedication of the last remaining strip that's not controlled by the city or county that would allow for Dunn Avenue to extend all the way across to LPGA. And in addition to that, we think that's a great traffic reliever. You're fine. But also, the overall rezoning does reduce traffic in this area by 9,000 trips on a daily basis. And so that was also great. So we think from a transportation perspective, it should help relieve some of the congestion in the LPGA area and will allow for this major connector road to come through and help relieve that as well.
May I ask a question? It says that the property does not have frontage on a public right-of-way at this time. Who would build the road to connect?
Sure. So the developer will build Dunn, build Dunn Avenue to access both of their access points on the property.
He would be paying for that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And what are you prepared, what are you prepared to do with this being near the wastewater treatment plant?
So the development agreement speaks specifically to that, and we worked with utility staff to say that, I think, it's an eight-foot masonry wall has to be installed. And we have to notify each individual lot owner as they come in of the proximity to that plant. So there will be a deed restriction that they sign at closing, that'll be recorded in the public records. So they're on notice.
There were some additional conditions that we talked to Ms. Gao about earlier today, and Mr. Morris, I believe you were going to review those.
Yes, sir. Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. We had a conversation with Ms. Gao and her co-counsel this afternoon in respect to really noting on the plat that it's adjacent to the wastewater plant, and also having an individual notice signed by each property owner at closing, acknowledging that the wastewater plant is adjacent. It's kind of the old airport argument about, I move next to an airport and I want the airport to close. And I understand that both Mr. Watts, and Mr. Watts is seated, and Ms. Gao, on behalf of their clients, are agreeable to both those things, which will give individual notice at each closing to a purchaser that they are buying something next to that, and it's also, from our standpoint as a city, necessary in that people will be advised on the front end and acknowledge that by signing their documents at closing in respect to it. and acknowledge that by signing their documents at closing in respect to it. So the plat note, as well as a document at closing, will be executed with each lot.
Yeah, and for the record, Mark Watts with Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. And Mr. Morris, to your point, following our conversation, we also did speak with representatives from the INA, and they were agreeable to those additional terms. So for the record, just wanted to state that I think, working with utilities staff, we've come up with the, you know, both buffering the wall, the disclosures, you know, on the plat, and now the additional, you know, lot-by-lot disclosure that they'll be required to sign as part of the closing packages. So I think that puts everybody on notice of what is there. You know, I think, I think from Jessica's comment a moment ago, you know, the property has that single-family zoning now. We're really locking it in at a much lower density than what is currently permitted. And so I think this is really adding a lot of additional details that'll protect the city's investment structure there.
Thank you, Mark.
Do we have any other questions? I appreciate that. I think it's an important project, although I'm concerned about every unit in the corridor. And if it weren't, I'll just be honest with you all, if it weren't for the connection being made without a guaranteed completion or agreement for LPGA, I wouldn't be able to support it. But knowing what it's going to do is actually a good thing. Question?
Yeah, so a couple of owners down the line from the initial owner.
Yep.
You can guarantee the city that they won't be coming back after us over the noise, the smell, and those kinds of things.
So in order to get homeowners insurance, right, they're going to have to run a title report. And after we do that first restriction that's recorded in the public records, it'll pop up in that title report. So they'll buy the property knowing that that applies.
On that property in perpetuity.
Yep, exactly.
Yes, Mr. Strickland, it's actually a notice for each lot that's signed and agreed to be recorded, either in front of or behind the deed. So side by side, in the title report, that will show up. They've agreed to that, and that's what we negotiated this afternoon.
Okay.
Do you have sufficient water and sewer connections?
Yes, ma'am, they do. They do.
Also, I wanted to know, on our workshop we had, it is in here. So.
Let me in terms of.
Right, under review, right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item 10D. It's the Human Resources Department Police and Fire Pension Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach amending the City of Daytona Beach Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, Subpart D of the City Charter, amending Section 3, Board of Trustees, providing for staggered terms for trustees, amending Section 6, Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, providing for normal retirement eligibility for 20 years of service regardless of age, amending Section 8, Disability, deleting allowance of temporary relief, providing for severability provisions, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions?
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Edith Shelley, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Hi, good evening. Edith Shelley, 2600 South Peninsula Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Great to see you all here. I just wanted to publicly state my support for this. I'm so excited to sit on the agenda. I'm particularly excited to see that the benefits and eligibility for normal retirement are going to 20 years of service regardless of age. It's very, as all of you are aware, I'm sure, difficult work, hard, just carrying all of that equipment. So I really appreciate this and look forward to a positive vote. Thank you.
Okay, and our final speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granary Avenue. As you know, I was in favor of this. However, looking at it carefully, I want you all to absolutely know that you just gave a half a million dollars to all of the police officers that retired. Those five extra years, the average is 106,000 per officer when they retire. So that's $530,000 you're giving as a gift. It is also $5 million per officer that you are committing to future budgets. My mother lives to 93. My uncles all lived to their late 80s. It is not unusual that people are not dying at 65. They're living into their 90s. You look at the obituaries. So we are committing, if somebody retires after 20 years, to 50 years at $106,000. That's $5 million will come due. You all are well aware of what happened in Chicago, to Detroit, and under Ginkas in New York City. They all went bankrupt. As long as you understand that you are committing a very large sum of money that this city will have to come up with in the future. You all will not be here. But there will be commissioners in your seat that will have to find the budget. Where are they going to get the money when every single individual is going to get this money? As long as you know that this is the money that's going to be required of future generations, and you've discussed it, then that's fine. But personally, $5 million is a lot of money. Thank you.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
And if I may, oftentimes, when that voice speaks, the numbers are always misconstrued. I'm sure our staff has vetted this, and they know exactly how much this is going to cost. And we want to support those who keep us safe.
I agree. We are already 40 people short on our police force. We're going to have more people coming. We need more police force. I mean, that's one thing we cannot stint on.
Good evening, Jim Sexton, Human Resources Director. This is really just a formality. We actually bargained this in the collective bargain agreement that is signed right now, and we're just codifying it now in pension, or I'm sorry, in an ordinance. I think what we just heard the last speaker is probably some, a little bit of some misunderstanding. Our final average compensation could be hovering around 80 to 106,000, depending on the officer's rank, if they're a sergeant or lieutenant or higher. The average final compensation is that. But after 20 years, with the 3% multiplier, you're getting 60% of that. So, and arguably, if you're 43 to 45 years old, yes, you're going to collect that pension a long time. But this isn't a force out, just to be clear, because I had a question out in the lobby, was, does this mean they have to leave at 20 years? And it is not. It's, they would be fully vested at 20 years. If they wanted to retire at that point, they could, or they could go into drop. The cost of this was $524,000 was the impact of this specific negotiated change. I'll leave it at that. That's not a $5 million impact.
This is on first reading.
Well, thank you. Just wanted to ask for clarification. But I mean, okay, do we have any other questions or comments? The numbers are easily inflated. We know that. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Going to move on to item 10E. It's the Human Resources Department Outside Detail Rate Increase Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending ordinance number 03-226 as amended by ordinance number 10-51, ordinance number 16-73, and ordinance 19-317 to establish increased hourly rates to be charged for police officers who provide service to bars, lounges, and nightclubs located within the core beachside tourist area, with increased rates being based on the dates of service, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing when this ordinance shall take effect.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any speakers?
I do have one speaker, Ms. Edith Shelley.
Edith Shelley, 2600 South Peninsula Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Again, I just wanted to publicly show my support for this. Chief Young has been working on this a long time, and many of you who have been on the commission for some years know that we have been trying to get this payment for our officers that go to these particular hotspots on a continuing basis. And for some years, we also worked at trying to get those particular hotspots to contribute. So I really appreciate the commission stepping forward, moving this forward, and appreciate your support on this item. Thank you so much.
And that was my only speaker for this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 10F. It's a Public Works Technical Services Preliminary and Final Plat for Timber Creek Village. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the final plat for Timber Creek Village, a mixed-use subdivision on 61.4 plus or minus acres of land located on the south side of LPGA Boulevard and west of Champion's Drive, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereupon, meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant who would like to speak on this item. Good evening, Jessica Gao, Cobb Cole Law Firm, 149 South Richard Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm getting faster at saying that. Just a quick note on this, and the preliminary plat was approved in May, so it should just be the final plat before you tonight. And the agenda summary just has the same acreage correction as the preliminary plat. It says 61.4. The property is 63.93. The backup documents are correct. We just want to make it clear for a resolution. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, do we, no additional questions? All right, got a motion, got a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We're going to move on to our administrative items. Item 11A is City Manager's Office. In addition to the Code of Orchesters for Establishment of Public Arts Program, this is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the City Code of Orchesters to create a new Chapter 4, consisting of Sections 4.1 through 4.6, to establish a public arts program, including provisions for the creation of the Public Arts Advisory Board, Public Arts Fund, and Public Arts Collection, and establishment of purchasing procedures for public art acquisition contracts, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And we're not taking votes on these. That's okay. It's okay. And the public hearing and final action will be July 20.
All right, I'll get used to it.
We're going to move on to item 11B. This is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Oasis, Plan Development General. This, again, is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 184.6 plus or minus acres of property bounded by LPGA Boulevard to the north, North Williamson Boulevard to the west, North Clyde Morris Boulevard to the east, and Mason Avenue to the south, from PDG Plan Development General and M3, General Industrial, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Project Oasis Plan District Agreement to allow for mixed-use development of the property, including residential, commercial, and light industrial uses subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing effective date. The public hearing and final action will be July 20.
Have you all seen this project? Y'all, this is, this is a project that I would recommend that you take a serious view of and think about, you know, what we've been talking about and how many parcels are being developed and how it impacts the LPGA Williamson corridors and through that area. And then I'll be prepared for discussion when it's time to vote. Okay?
Okay. We're going to move on to item 11C. It's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division. First Amendment to Williamson Crossing, amended and restated PD. This is also an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Williamson Crossing, amended and restated Plan District Agreement between the city and shops at Williamson Crossing LLC to allow for a veterinary hospital or clinic as a permitted use, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment to the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public. I know. The public hearing and final action will be July 20. We're going to move now on to 11D. This is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to the Integrated LPGA PD. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Integrated LPGA Plan District Agreement relating to a traffic signal at the intersection of Grand Champion Boulevard and US 92, which is the subject of a separate contract between the city and the planned district developer, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the PD agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action will be July 20. We're going to move on to item 11E. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Space Coast Credit Union Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Section 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 4.1 plus or minus acres of property located at the northwest intersection of Bill France Boulevard and Checkered Flag Boulevard, from office transition to commercial amusement, amending the future land use element neighborhood P to restrict the maximum residential density for the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action will be July 20. Moving on to 11F. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Daytona Mixed Use PD. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 4.1 plus or minus acre tract, A 4.1 plus or minus acre tract, located at the northwest corner of Bill France Boulevard and Checkered Flag Boulevard, from OP, Office Professional, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Daytona Mixed Use Plan District Agreement to incorporate the tract into the Daytona Mixed Use Plan District, authorize additional commercial uses, and revise development criteria, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action for this item will be July 20. Moving on to item 11G. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to Timoca Town Center PD. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Timoca Town Center Plan District Agreement relating to development and use of approximately 118 acres of property generally located east of Interstate 95 and south of LPGA Boulevard, west of Williamson Boulevard, to increase the maximum number of residential dwelling units and decrease the maximum non-residential development permitted within specific areas of the property, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment to the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action will be July 20. Moving on to 11H. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Allow codifier to correct typos for the Land Development Code text amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the City Land Development Code, LDC, Article 1, to add Section 1.10, supplementation of code, to allow the codifier to make non-substantive changes to the LDC, including correcting manifest, cross-referencing, grammatical numbering, and spelling errors, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing direction to the codifier and providing an effective date. And this is, public hearing and final action will be July 20. Moving on to 11I. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Glitch Bill Land Development Code text amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending provisions of the Land Development Code, amending Section 3.3. E in relation to planning board hearings and notices, amending Section 3.4 in relation to variances, administrative adjustments and easement abandonment, amending Section 6.3. I in relation to encroachment of outdoor seating areas into right-of-way, amending LDC Section 6.4. E in relation to material specifications for shade trees, amending Section 6.12. C exterior color and design standards on major city thoroughfares, amending LDC Section 6.13. K, street trees, amending LDC Section 7.2, required infrastructure, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action will be July 20. We're going to move on to item 11J. This is the Human Resources Department memorandum of agreement. Sorry about that. It's a resolution. So this is a resolution approving memorandum of agreements, amending the city's collective agreements with the Coastal Florida Police Benevolent Association, Florida State Lodge, Fraternal Order of Police, Inc., Fraternal Order of Police, Inc., and the Internal Association of Firefighters, providing for mid-contract pay increases for public safety personnel, effective July 3, 2022, at a cost of $458,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements and providing an effective date.
Still moved.
Second.
Yep, got the motion and the second.
One in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 7-0.
Let's go, y'all.
Motion carries?
Carries 7-0.
Okay. And for the record, there were no speakers on this item.
No, I don't.
Oh, you didn't fill out a... Do you want to speak? Okay.
She supports it.
Yeah, come on up. Sure.
2600 South Peninsula Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I wanted to specifically thank our mayor and city manager. I know you have worked very hard with Chief Young to get to this point, and it is crucial to our officers that this happened, being one of the lowest paid, if not the lowest in the county. And as we know, our officers, with all our special events and graduations and things that we do, and it was a, one of Chief Young's things that he really wanted to accomplish when he came in as chief. Thank you so much. He told me you worked very hard with him and got to this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the vote.
Okay. That was our final item on the agenda.
All right. Thank you all. At this time, we will move on to commission comments. We commence with the commissioner of Zone 5, Commissioner Danette Henry. You're first tonight?
You were first on both tonight, yes. It's one of those times where they coincide.
So, we are having several movie nights in the zone, brought to you by COVID funds. So we're having...
ARPA funds.
Sorry. We are having several movie nights in the zone, brought to you by COVID funds. I am excited to get the community back, ARPA funds. I am excited to get the community back out and active and engaged, and so I would like to invite everyone out to two of three movie nights that we will be having on Friday, July 29, in the Derbyshire Park, 849 Derbyshire Road. We will be showing the new Cinderella, and I would like for everyone to bring their families out, bring the children out, bring your blankets, bring your pets, bring your chairs. We're going to have free games, a DJ, free hot dogs and drink, free popcorn, and free candy. And then, on Friday, August 12, in Suburbia Park, on 700 Heinemann Street, we're going to be showing Space Jam. Gates are going to be open at 7:30 PM for both movie nights, and movie night is going to start at, the movie is going to start at 8:30 PM. And there, too, we will have a free DJ and games, free hot dogs and drinks, and popcorn and candy. And I hope to see everyone there at both events, and thank you. That is all the announcements I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Two great movies, and my little ones would enjoy both. So we will come over and be Zone 5 residents for a night. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to share. I'd like to start by congratulating our citizen, Alana Washington, on her new home by Homes Bring Hope, something that Commissioner May and I have invested in to help our citizens have an opportunity for just a piece of the pie, you know. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Ken, too, on another successful Fourth of July celebration, although I thought I was going to forget the National Anthem. I was really nervous.
You did a great job.
Thank you very much. This past week, I had an opportunity to host a summer camp book festival for the youth in our summer camps, and they had another appearance by Cornbread. And Cornbread showed up and showed out. They love him. So they danced with him, they learned some technical language in English before Cornbread came out, you know, they got to get educated first, then we can play. And then lastly, I just want to remind everyone that in Midtown, on Saturday evening at 7:30 PM, the music concerts continue. This weekend, it will be The Groove. So join us at the Daisy Stockton Park from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. This concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Fabulous. Commissioner Trager?
Well, I'm glad we're moving toward a settlement for the river approach. Anyhow, we passed tonight, or we didn't actually pass, but we had the first reading on nine new ordinances. I do think we ought to have public hearing, at least, so we can get some of the ideas before we have the final vote on it, as it is now, where all it is is a reading, and we really don't hear what the public has to say on a specific ordinance until we bring it up again to vote on it. So I think that might be a good idea for us. And it was a wonderful Fourth of July parade and proclamation and everything. It was hot, but it was...
Very hot.
Hot and nice, both. So, thank you, everybody.
Now, the mayor had a medical license, he was taking care of, he's only dying.
Just saying, I found out that the mayor had medical license. I mean, he was, he can take...
Taking care of the Commodore.
I have pictures I will be sharing with him at a later time.
He's just a nursemaid.
Yes.
With the ice pad.
She gave me a lot of good instructions.
And to find out he wasn't overheated. He was, he had, his blood pressure was, like, sky high.
Yeah, but...
Somebody's doing, he's doing it.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay. Commissioner Strickland, Zone 2.
Yes. A little more serious. I hope everyone read the two articles in the newspaper today concerning housing and rents. They're going up fast. We still need to be giving it some thought before we get in crisis mode, I think. And I'd like to bring up, this is a third rail lightning rod. At some point, we're going to have to start saying no, at least temporarily, to development, because we talked before, we've got 9,000 unbuilt homes along the LPGA car. Supposedly Avalon's going to bring us another 10,000. I went to a DEM meeting the other day that, between apartments, townhomes, single-family lots, that sort of thing, going to be another 2,207 units. Figure a couple of cars apiece, more water, more sewer. Sometime or another, we're going to have to talk about this with great seriousness. I don't know when that time will be, but the sooner the better, I would think. With that, I hope everybody had a great Fourth. I enjoyed the parade, although I almost passed out carrying the brand off. And that's it for me.
Okay.
Before Commissioner May begins, I'd like to echo Commissioner Strickland's comments. You all, we have got to set a date where we all can get together. We had a date, and we postponed it for an award acknowledgement that we might have could have just done a little bit later in that same day when we all had a date. But normally, we would have met a couple of times by now in the year as a commission for strategic planning and what have you. And one of the things we want to talk about is smart growth, Ken. So you all look at your calendars, come up with a date that we can all meet, okay?
So then, we all, with regard to the housing, we all received the NEXIS study? Were you saying something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to, I agree with Commissioner Strickland, but I haven't really seen anything that we are approving that we have never had a workshop on. Everything that's, I'm watching it very closely. Everything that's come before us has already been approved, and back from 2017 on up before we, before I was even on, or you, Commissioner Strickland. So I'm watching it, but everything that we already had that workshop, if you have this, you can see.
It wasn't approved, it's planned.
No, it's units built and units approved.
But we didn't approve, but tonight we approved 352 units. We could have...
What one are you talking about?
The ones that we approved on Tamoca. We could have rejected those. We'll have, I think, 850 units coming off of Williamson later this month.
But that one's not on here. I agree with that. The INA was on here, but I asked staff about it, but it was under review. But I've been watching those things.
But just because it's on there, we're still approving. The ones that come before us now, we're approving.
Okay. Now, can we get Jim Morris up here? Because when we had this workshop, this is, they said units built was 3,300, 3,558. Units approved, 12,567.
Okay. Where's Jim? I mean, did we approve something tonight?
Mr. Morris?
No.
Because I'm not just...
I think Dennis, Jim are, no, there's Jim.
Oh, he's here.
But we do have an updated list.
Right, okay.
Question, please.
Okay. From our workshop, when we had a workshop, it said units built 3,558, and this was on the others, the west side of it, because we sent this email later when the mayor requested an email of the other one. And it says units approved, 12,567. Is that correct?
I can't see, Jim Morris, deputy city manager, there in commission. I can't see the list, but I certainly think...
Here's the list. The only one I know that was a mistake was the INA that we did tonight, which is the Dunn extension.
They're talking about it.
And it says, it was on the list.
I believe that it's correct. If I might, may I just add a little bit in the discussion. Comp plan has got land uses allocated, and the zoning that you see coming in are, by and large, consistent with the comp plan, but you do have some comp plan amendments as well. As things move forward, you've got the issue of the comp plan and what has been approved. Those things are entitled to proceed, and there's always the questions of concurrency, which is water, sewer, and roads at a minimum. You have other things, too. And those have to be addressed and met as we move forward. So you're evaluating, as you go through, questions of concurrency and the availability of all the resources necessary to serve a development. And there are some choices in density as you come to new developments. Comp plan isn't just a number, it's a range of numbers, and you have a chance to look at those things as well when you look forward to it. So you've got a number of issues that play a role for new approvals that are coming in, ones that have been approved that are coming back through plats. They are vested ordinarily for that purpose upon payment of concurrency charges that go typically with roads or the big one. And we've got other things coming as well. So there's, it's a two-edged application.
So the point is that you do not have to approve things based on the fact that if we think that the road is overburdened, is that correct?
There is, you've got some legal questions that play a role in each one. Threshold question is concurrency, and where there's deficiency in service, you also have payments being made to both the county and the city to accomplish those. The widening of Williamson before lanes was accomplished by roughly $13 or $14 million collected from development in Daytona Beach that accommodated that widening. What you saw tonight was the extension of Dunn Avenue, and it's about 30 or 40% of that, if the entire development is built, which would be a public road available as the county thoroughfare map road, which means it's in the thoroughfare system. If those developments occur, you'll have relief on LPGA when the bridge is built and those sort of things. It's a balancing act, and there's a lot of things to discuss. Is everything just cut and dried, black and white, and you're just stamping it approved? No, that's not the case. You have discretion as a commission. Each case, I think, deserves an independent evaluation for the issues that you will see for that particular one. And I can tell you that everybody on your staff is ready to discuss those issues with you and answer your questions if that's what needs to be done.
Also, Ms. Mayor, we will also update our agenda packet to denote when something was approved or not approved and what steps, because I think that will help...
Right.
You all to be aware, similar to tonight. But we'll send out dates and have that discussion again for the strategic plan. But I think having information about what has already been approved, when it was approved, will help you all make discussions with the legal department.
I'm sorry. I would like the year it was approved as well, because I know in a workshop it was done. It said 2016, 2018. That's why I've been going by this religiously and watching.
And the information, as information the commission requested, we can certainly update it, bring it to you, and provide all the detail that you want, as well as what the manager mentioned. That's all readily available. The comp plan is really the guiding document, and so much of what the commission has done has been consistent with the comp plan and things that were anticipated for many, many years. Now, when you're the first person in, you know, I never thought anybody else was coming. That's a statement people often make when they move to a place. The case is, it is always anticipated other people would follow, and that's just the circumstances of the area that we live in. I was born here in 1951. I never thought everybody was coming. They're here, and we'll deal with that, and it makes a difference to us as a community as we go forward, both good and bad.
Also, when you sent us, when we had that workshop and we got this, and then the mayor wanted what was coming on the other side, you sent an email. Is there any way that we can get a copy of that in our mailboxes?
Commissioner, I will give you everything. Our department will give you everything that you want. We'll bring you a fully updated thing to try and address these questions. If people listen to this video, so we give you as complete a set of information as we possibly can with the resources that we have, including the additional information.
Since, okay, and since we're on this topic, the development on, that is coming before us or was mentioned tonight with the 800 units on Williamson, it fronts Williamson, LPGA, Mason...
Is this Oasis, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
It is, it is the nicest development of all the developments that we've seen, in my opinion, maybe with the exception of Mosaic. Mosaic is beautiful, and I think that a lot of the other developments that we allowed off of LPGA are just cookie cutter, boring developments that we allowed, but Mosaic is, it meets the threshold for excellence. But this one is nice, but look at how many people it's going to cause to come on to the, on to LPGA. You know, and it's like, I told those guys, I met with them recently, I wish you had been first, because I'm not in the yes mood, you know? But this one is hard to say no to because of the way that they've designed it, and, you know, if they, you know, you know, but we'll...
And as a footnote on that one, Mayor, they're actually working with Chief Driscoll to locate a fire station site that's needed in that vicinity and located on that property. Chief and I had a conversation with them outside the meeting just after they left. That's also a part of the discussion on that one.
Yeah, that's nice. I'm worried about those cars.
Is it possible to, to slow this thing down, at least temporarily, until the bridge is replaced on LPGA without ending up in court? And...
Strickland, you're...
I have an opinion, but I'll certainly yield...
You're looking at at least, I'm not exaggerating, you're at least six years out before that bridge.
Well, see, my...
Maybe even longer.
I don't really care how long it's going to be. I care about the fact that we can't keep putting stuff out there until traffic just comes to it, almost said a bad word, a standstill, you know? And paper's nice, it's pretty and all that. I've got one, too. But we got to do something to slow things down.
Can that be done?
We can look at the grounds for a moratorium. That would be your mechanism to do that. I'll be glad to research that and work with Mr. Morris to determine if that's legally possible.
Well, I called for that two years ago. I asked for it two years ago, if it's possible. Well, if you had a moratorium two years ago, we've been improving things. We've continued to approve. If you had a moratorium then, you would have, you would not have had that problem. Or some of the problems, because we've got so much going. And what Miriam Giabi wrote doesn't let me think that it's six years. It could be 10 years, you know? And so I would look at, want to have some grounds for that, but I also want to have it before we approve the one that's coming before us.
They, they already have all the money, right now, they're doing the PDNE and the design. They already have all the money for that. They have the money for, all the money for the right-of-way, and they have, they don't have the money for the construction because the design has to be done before they can determine, the state can determine how much for the LPGA.
Correct.
LPGA, yeah.
So if that's your direction, I'll be glad to look into that possibility and report to you in a memo before the next meeting.
There is a paradox in the question, and I'll bite on the point. Development happening for the Dunn extension actually helps facilitate a relief road for LPGA, but without the development, unless it's paid for with public money, that doesn't occur.
But we're not talking about that particular development. We're talking about the development, Oasis, which is a nicer development than most of them, but it's going to be a more burdensome one in the core area, too.
Different subject altogether. You're right.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, is that...
Okay, Commissioner Strickland was talking about all these that's already been approved, the units. Am I correct?
No. If you, if you look at some of this stuff we went over tonight, there's going to be more and more come before us. If we approve those, that just adds to the, the number, you know? Well, we have 9,000 that have been approved that haven't been, been built out along LPGA. Avalon's supposed to bring us 10,000 more at some point. Avalon's supposed to bring us 10,000 more at some point. We can't do anything about those.
Avalon is not bringing.
That's not true. That's not true. A moratorium would include the second phase of Avalon, because we've only approved the portion that is adjacent to Margaritaville. So a moratorium would include, or possibly include that.
Well, since you said that word, I'll get on board with it. I think we need a, a moratorium to, to slow things down. And I know it's gonna upset the development community, but we've got quality of life to look at for the people that already live here. Are we gonna represent them, or are we gonna represent people that we don't even know who they are that may move here in the future? I'm concerned about our current residents. I'm not concerned about people that are coming here, or, and I'm gonna go out on a limb with this, or a developer's profit margin. That's not my concern. My concern is my current residents.
I'm, I have been and am in agreement with determining how we can consider a moratorium. And I'll use that language. And I, I came into this meeting tonight knowing that I was gonna have that discussion. And that's why I said earlier, we need to look at that particular development of Oasis, because I knew that it's, you know, I met with them. I personally have a lot to like about the development, but the, the road is slowing down. And I'm preferable to slowing down and finding a way to, to meet that, that demand. We have to remember that you've got 3,500 homes coming with the one that you just called Avalon. Not 10,000, 3,500. But it could be another 7,000 or 8,000, I think it is. And that's, that's where the moratorium could conceive.
Within, within 20, the other remaining is supposed to be built within 20 years. I met with him in Orlando.
Yeah. Okay. But, but at the rate we're going, I don't, we don't know if the, the road will be built, the bridge, for 10 years. And Miriam said that it's a possibility in that article that not expanding it is an option. That we're not here, that's, that's what the article said, that not expanding it is an, is an option. And when I saw that statement, it made me, it led me to say that we need to have this discussion tonight to say that if that's an option, then what the heck are we doing? We have to stop. If that, until you can tell me that option is not an option, you know, because, you know, we're gonna be creeping.
Mayor, I know you're looking at me, Mayor, but I know that everybody up there is hearing the direction, so we'll collectively work on that subject. And I, I understand the direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great.
Anything else, it was your turn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner May.
So a couple of questions. When will we be going over our housing study report to have a workshop planned for that?
I think it's the next, what's the date? We have a.
I believe it's July 20th, the next meeting.
So it's the next meetings when we're going over it. Okay.
Return to meeting.
Sir, it's gonna be a presentation by the preparer of the article, so he can get the details and talk about the linkage and so on.
Do you all want it to be at 5:30 before the meeting?
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty comprehensive.
Very important.
Yeah.
In fact, I was gonna ask my friends, and they started.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Something said to be here that night.
It will be at 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock? Okay. So that will be the next meeting for 5 o'clock? Okay.
Next meeting.
Okay. The other thing is that this week was interesting for me. I got to work with Leisure Services. A lot of other commissions have already experienced working with them. I had a fantastic experience. They were accommodating, they were kind, they were helpful, they set up, they took everything down. I said to them, I'm so used to doing events where I'm my own service person, I clean my own tables, I put away my own chairs, and it was so nice to, to have help with it. We had a little hot dog event at one of my senior facilities, and the residents were happy, and they felt appreciated. But more than anything else, I appreciated the effort that Leisure Services put into it. It was genuine care there. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. I was at the parade. Thank you so much. Very, very nice parade. I went to the opening of the house on Walnut, and I will say that happy residents, I liked the fact that a few months earlier, Commissioner Reed and I were there, and we were cleaning the streets. We did an award presentation. So it wasn't just that house that looks nice, it was the street that was improved. And I think obvious little improvements go a long way. And then finally, I just wanted to say that this weekend, Allen Chapel is having an event, 10:30 to 1:30. And it's in honor of Minority Mental Health Month, which is the month of July. So I encourage everybody to come out, they have great speakers about very many topics, starts at 10:30 and goes until about 1:30. And sometimes, I think all of us commissioners, we do so many things in the week that we forget, because I know I forget some of the events. Like, I forgot about the house, because we did that earlier in the two-week period. But there are so many really good things happening in Daytona Beach. So thank you so much.
Let me just say one thing, and, and it's just a little correction, that, that mental health fair is actually by Medallion, Cynthia Slater's daughter, Kiana Medallion, it's just at Allen Chapel. I wanna give credit to her business, because she does mental health. Okay?
Hello, Commissioner Cantu.
Yes, I just wanna say I really enjoyed the parade. We had a lot more people out there. I was very surprised. I was happy to see the merchants on Main Street open up. I seen some of them giving out coffee and donuts. But yeah, I was very excited. I do have one question for you, Mr. Morris. Can you tell me where we are on the cell phone tower?
Yes, ma'am. The request for proposals is out. There's one responder, again, Mayor Jim Morris, deputy city manager, in respect to the proposal. One of the proponents has said that the location at the stadium is something that's in the way of the run, main runway of the airport, and they think the tower can't be taller than 130 feet. I haven't had a chance to have other respondents propose, respond to it, so we're actually extending the date to August 1 on the award. Have a conference call with all the people involved at the response to see if they agree with the conclusion. A one proponent that has said the tower can only be probably 130 feet tall. We need a tower taller than that for service. So we're actually looking at alternative sites in anticipation of that. And that's something that Commissioner Cantu brought up earlier in the day, and so that's why I'm able to respond to you now in respect to that. But in respect to purchasing, we voluntarily extended it to August 1. In the bid process, we can talk to all the bidders without violating the bid process to see if others with the same expertise, first party, would agree with that conclusion.
And how many do we have?
I believe it's four of those respondents. Three or four.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it?
That's it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something really quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to encourage my fellow commissioners to get rid of their white books. Everything we have is on the iPad. And I feel like we're, we're, we could be kinder to the trees, because when we first, when I got on the commission, there were no white books. And I know that the mayor got a white book, and I know that the city manager and attorney got a white book, but the rest of us got iPads, and they said, everything you need is on that iPad.
Not mine.
Huh?
Not mine.
Not yours? Yeah.
Yeah. I usually have my book. I just left it home.
I know.
And, and so, I think y'all should be kinder to the trees.
Jenny agrees.
Jenny agrees with me, don't you, Jenny? Be kinder to the trees. Look at this.
Every two weeks.
Okay. So you can get rid of this? You can get rid of this? Like, leave that.
That's all I wanted to say.
This is how I like to study, old fashioned.
That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I understand that sentiment, but as a teacher, when I was a teacher, I was known by my students as Jefferson. That was my nickname, because they read so much Thomas Jefferson, that that's what they called me, because I just think the man was beyond brilliant and worthy of all intellectual considerations. But the main thing that I did as a teacher was that I demanded that the students engaged with the text. And you can engage with the text on an iPad, but it's not as easy as you can with your fingers and your touch. It's the same as teaching and demanding the kids at home that they have a real book in their hands. So I'm, I don't wanna be disrespectful to the trees, but I have to keep my, you know, I can't engage with that in the same way. So I'm gonna have to keep it for a little while longer. My only comment tonight was going to be related to the Oasis and the developments along LPGA Williamson and the whole idea that we should have some sort of a moratorium or some sort of consideration for growth along LPGA. After reading Miriam Giabi's article, I was once again, you know, I felt compelled to come and have that discussion. We had a discussion. We were supposed to have a follow-up discussion. We didn't have a follow-up discussion. So I look forward to, you know, what you can bring back and what our options are. But I will say that.
Our next TPO meeting, there will be an update on LPGA, too, as well.
That would be good. That'd be great, if we can get that. But the next meeting, and I've already told them, I'm gonna be hard-pressed to support the development that we talked about tonight. So that's it for me. I will defer now to the city manager and then the city attorney.
Yes. Is it possible for us to do something on August the 24th? That is a Wednesday. It's the opposite Wednesday of our city commission meeting. I don't know when school takes back in.
It's way back in. School's in. It'll come on August 24th.
Okay.
5 o'clock.
It's a Wednesday, so we'll look at, right at 5 o'clock. And we'll have some packets together of Senate, yes, ma'am?
On August 24th, I think that there is an affordable housing conference that both Commissioner May and I are trying to attend.
During the day?
It's the whole day for the 24th, 25th in Orlando. It's statewide.
Oh, that y'all will be attending and staying over that, for that. We will send you, what was the 10th? Oh, no, August 10th is for the league.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the 10th is a, so 24th is a, please check your calendars for the 24th. We'll also send out that, because what we do wanna do is do a, some type of a survey for the community also, so you can be aware of some of their interests and concerns that they have that we can share with you all for those discussion points of what the goals and objectives should be.
And the 24th is for what now?
A retreat to talk about some key things from the growth, development, goals and objectives for the year.
And you're interested in that being held on?
I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, we may have to do two.
Because don't kill the messenger, but we did, we've done this on a Saturday before.
Yeah, I, well.
I can't do a Saturday. Sorry.
No Saturday?
Nope, not right now. Maybe when school starts back up.
No Saturday?
No Saturday right now. Maybe when school starts back up, but.
Because we did put in for a Friday or Saturday and have it start at like 9:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon.
Commissioner, Commissioner Henry, I'm just online. It says, annual affordable housing conference, August 29th to the 31st.
So can we go earlier in the day?
No, it's the 29th, so we're good. It's the 29th.
But I'm saying, can we go earlier in the day?
I'm fine. On the 24th, right?
Yeah.
That's, oh, so you, you go back to work. I mean, I mean, you, it's a.
But it's August 24th.
Oh, it's true. I beg.
And Mayor, that's why I asked, Mayor, are you back?
I'm at work.
I may, I may work now, but I still work.
We, we're gonna give you, tomorrow we'll send out some Friday dates, if that's all possible for you all.
Well, you got that day, August 24th. Why don't we just go at, at 4 o'clock? Can we go at 4?
4 o'clock?
Go from 4 to 7, 4 to 8. Then do it again after that.
Food will be light, 'cause I'm on a diet starting in August?
Just make sure my.
Just because you're on a diet, that, that mean, that's because your food is light.
Yeah. So we'll look at 4 o'clock for August 24th, and we may, and we may do two days of it. So I did wanna say that our communications team is really listening to you all and wanted to just share, we're getting ready to do some major work at the Dickerson Center, things that you all have put in place. So I wanted to share, we removed 30 boats out of the water on waves. And so that, oh, we have got people clapping. Oh, yeah. Hey, hey, hey. Not, we didn't take good boats. We took the, the last day. I mean, some people might have been clapping because they got their boat back. But no, we, we did that. We're starting something new. We're calling, it's the football kickoff party. It's like a tailgate before kickoff season at Municipal Stadium. We hope that people come out if you wanna tailgate. In a car, it's gonna be $10 per car, 20 per car. We're gonna have competitions, the best tailgate, country music, rock and pop music concerts. We want you to come out on that day on August 20th. So it's really kickoff for the college football, just to have a good time. Another thing that, that want me to share with you all, y'all have been asking about a calendar. We've been putting a calendar together for all of the events each, each month, so share your calendar with individuals. Somebody said woo. That's all of it. It's summer fun on the run. We want you to get out there. We're gonna be having one soon. Hopefully, we'll get some commissioners to get into the dunk tank and the mayor.
The city mayor.
Yeah, no, I, I'm gonna be throwing.
Excuse me?
Yeah. We'll, we'll let you know when we, we're gonna have the mayor and Commissioner Strickland's dunk tank.
I can get it now.
So, so you, you heard that, Leisure Services?
What day is that?
This is on, this is July the 20th.
Yeah.
Chief Young, so we're probably gonna have a.
Attorney.
Okay, yes, well.
They're gonna get us.
You may have some adults come out for the attorney.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's all. Just wanted you to share that they did take it, your comments about the newsletter. And also, just wanna thank, not only, people thank me for working with Chief Young, but the entire HR staff, our personnel analyst, Robin, our HR director, they all worked together to get the numbers to us. And so I wanted to just thank the HR staff as well, and Chief and his team for, for all working together with the unions to bring that information back to you all. So thanks, staff, that hopefully they're listening somewhere. We, I appreciate the work they do from a communications standpoint and some of our HR work. Thank you.
Good job. Okay. Bob? All right. At this time, we will hear from the citizens of Daytona Beach.
Our first speaker is Robin Sturgis, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Hello. How are you all? I'm Robin Sturgis, 1436 Cadillac Drive. First of all, I want to say thank you to Hollery. A couple of years ago, I asked for a donation, and she gave me something. I have a nonprofit organization called She's Covered, and I provide undergarments, sanitary A couple of years ago, I asked for donation, and she gave me something. I have a nonprofit organization called She's Cover, and I provide undergarments, sanitary products, continence products, anything to make a female feel confident. I've traveled to South Africa, Jamaica, Puerto Rico, giving away those items and doing conferences to those women. But I've been doing this since 2016, right in our local area. And it is such a... Females on the committee, I know you understand what I'm doing. I go out in the homeless community and make packages to make sure our women have what they need every month. I provide senior citizens... That's my heart. Senior women, it's really my heart. I had a senior citizen contacting me the other day, and I met with her, and it was burning up hot that day, and she had on a sweatshirt. And I said, "Are you..." And she said, "Yeah, the only bra I have just wrote." So we take it for granted, walk it in the store, getting the things that we need and they don't have. I don't have an income stipulation when I give, because there really isn't any income these days in time. The stories that I heard when the pandemic was just heartbreaking. I... My budget is like really minimum, so the majority of my money is the funds that I have coming out of my funds, and I haven't really worked the last year. So coming up, August 6th, it's about seven nonprofits we're getting together, and Campbell High School is virtually letting us use their facility. And we're doing haircuts, of course, backpacks, braiding of a doctor. We have everything that these kids need. And I'll have my She's Cover booth ready for the girls with the sanitary products, the hair care products, the odorant, things of that nature, the bras, the underwear, things that they need. I give back to the schools, Westside, Campbell, and these girls, a lot of them act out because they don't have. So I'm that face. They call me the brawly. So I mean, I'm sorry, mommy, is that the brawly? I just want to make my... Make sure my females feel confident from head to toe. I do workshops. I'm a walking resource book for females. So I had one lady, a senior citizen, she rode a free-wheel bike to get a paper notarized, because I'm also a notary. So I notarize papers free to females. So I'm just asking all of you, whatever you can do to help She's Cover. I've had this nonprofit since 2016. I would appreciate whatever you can do to help the females out in arguments.
Robin, it's been a couple of years, so your 501(c)(3) may or may not still be on file with us. Would you email us another copy of that?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
And is that your brochure?
Um, no, I didn't bring any. I just...
Oh, okay.
No, I don't.
But is that the brochure for the event?
Oh, for the event, yes.
Yes. Did you bring any? If not, would you give it to the clerks so they can copy it for us?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep doing what you're doing.
Once she sends you that, send that. I'll donate $200.
Okay, we'll put it on the net.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hold on just one second. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire, for keeping this meeting in order. Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. And two of the things I want to talk about, and I want to apologize, I didn't want you to think I was being unruly. What I was doing earlier was exercising the rules of Robert's Rules of Order. One of the things... There are two things that are always in place. Any of you are familiar with Robert's Rules of Order is copies of the library. I was raised on it from the time I was about yay high. And that is point of order is always in order. And there's times when you hear a lot of confusion going around in here, and that's why I stepped to raise a point of order. City attorney had made a point that I felt was not being followed, and I agreed with what he had to say. And so a point of order, and the other thing, of course, is a motion to adjourn. Those are things that are always in order. Robert's Rules was designed to keep things... And there's some good things. Limited amount of time. I've already said my pretty much impassioned things, but there's a couple of things, and the previous speaker reminds me how many good things there are in Daytona. There's a lot of good stuff here. I planned years ago to retire here specifically because I saw the potential in this community. I saw people from different races and backgrounds and parts of the country all coming together. Yes, there's problems. Can't turn a blind eye to that. But this is why it's so important to have good leadership. All of you have to show good leadership to the citizen. You've got 72,000-plus people out here, and how you act in these meetings and how you take care of your citizens is so very important. And that's why integrity in government is very important. I get sick and tired, and as I know a lot of you do, of seeing the things, dirty Daytona and corrupt Daytona and all the other things. I get tired of hearing people say, "Why would you live in Daytona? It's a terrible place to live." No, it's a great place to live. Got potential. Not perfect, got problems. We can all work it out. We've got a new city manager here with more energy than I've seen in city government in God knows how long. I'm glad to see it. But the old ways of doing business have got to go away. There was a culture here, and there's still a culture of legalism. And I watched as lawyers misrepresented and confused you people, just like the original application for this land seizure was filled with mistruth and facts that weren't in evidence. And you were all confused by it, and that's what lawyers thrive on. They thrive on the confusion. And then I sat there and listened to them, and I'm sorry, she's not here now, again misrepresent the facts. And I try to get down to the truth of this. And I know, Mayor Henry, I thank you for coming out and actually seeing the property. Only got six seconds left, and I just want to sum up. You know, at the end of the day, I think we're all still friends. We need to keep moving forward.
Of course.
Don't take our land.
Okay. I don't know if Dan Stone is still here? Lee Kizner? Okay. Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Maria Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Feet Street. I'm here tonight because I'm dissatisfied with the fact that we do not have access to our public... To our elected officials, and that's a serious problem. I got out here on the campaign trail and get people elected to office so that we can have accessibility to them. We do not have that here. You can't get a meeting with anybody. I came here one day and sat here for two solid hours trying to get to see the city manager, trying to get to see Derrick Henry, trying to get to see Paul Marie, trying to get to see somebody. I didn't get to see nobody. We were paying taxes. I pay a lot of taxes. I've been paying them at my home since 1969. I need to have access to the elected officials that we are paying to do their job. I launched your career, Derrick Henry. That's the election. I made it happen, and that's how you got here. And you ran on one city, one vision, and I haven't seen the vision, and the city is suffering over in my neighborhood. One of the residents came to this meeting, and she told you all about the flooding over there on Cottle Circle. She called me every day. I said, "Well, what do you want me to do? You entered the meeting, you told them about it, they didn't listen to you." So the flooding needs to be fixed on Cottle Circle. I'm sure one of your relatives stayed over there. Maybe it didn't flood when they was over there when she was speaking. And that needs to be corrected too. Do not interrupt people till their time is up. You need to think about the residents who are paying the bills. Also, we was told that you was gonna have a midtown man, a four-story, 82-unit multifamily workforce housing apartments there on Martin Luther King at 223 Martin Luther King Boulevard with the midtown redevelopment. And I haven't heard anything about what happened to those apartments. No one has informed me. I still want to get the information. You're here to do the people's business. We want you to be able to communicate with your elected officials and live up to your motto, "One city, one vision." I have the thing at my house we sent to the people. I was sending one to my house, but the people wanted it to me anyway. So we need to be about the people's business. Treat everybody that comes in this city hall with dignity and respect. And I am pleased with Mrs. Strickland and Ruth Drager and Stacy Hand too, because she did get the bedrooms back here. I was over there, and they had that beautiful ceremony. I didn't see the ceremony because I was on my... But y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Maria Johnson, and I don't know if Randy Gray is still here or Mark Kowalski. And then on deck is Sandy Murphy. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Maria Johnson, and I'm elated to be here because I finally get a chance to share my story, what my children and I have been going through since we've been here in Daytona Beach, Florida. We are from Oklahoma, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Due to domestic violence, long story short, when we arrived here in Orlando, Orlando Coalition helped us become residents of Daytona Beach, Florida. We've been here. It's a beautiful place to be. There's lots of things to do with the libraries, with the children and everything. Unfortunately, our house that we live in is a condemned... It needs to be condemned. There's leaks in the house. I signed an as-is lease due to the fact that I didn't know anything about the home. When I moved in, I began to learn that it was infested with rats. That has taken me six months to rid. We moved in in October of 2021. Upon me moving in, I've started being harassed by my neighbors to the left of me and the right of me. The neighbor on the left, the homeowner, her and I get along. Her daughter, which is older than I, and I'm 43, she micromanages everything at my house. Her mother says she wants the residence to remain vacant. My neighbor on the left, he's just a little bit too friendly, and he says things inappropriately and harasses me on a continuous basis. I've had to call the police several times. Due to our background with me trying to get everything established from ground zero, I haven't had the funds to hire attorney or what have you. Long story short, my neighbors have harassed me so much and called my landlord so much that he now wants me out, which is okay with me because the house is not fit for anyone to live in. The bathroom toilet leaks. The drain in the bathroom isn't connected. We haven't been able to use the sink in the bathroom for eight months. The showerhead, like I said, the rats, we have lizards in our home. There is mold in our home. None of the windows lock or is secure. The stove is non-working for eight months. We have improper lighting. The flooring is unleveled in the kitchen. I have been harassed profusely by the neighbors, and they have brought up code enforcement several times that I decided to call code enforcement and ask them to come out. And upon talking to them, they informed me that my landlord doesn't have a rental lease. And so we have court Friday, but I need code enforcement, Captain Scott Lee, to speak with me about this matter. I don't feel that it's right for him to get paid $1,200 a month, each month, and harass me for money that's already been paid, just gouging me every kind of way that he can. And the harassment between the neighbors and him, we can't live. I've been sick from CO2 poisoning because the stove pushes out too much gas. In four minutes, my son was at childcare. He was abused. I reported it to the police. He's been on a waiting list for over six months. I need the city to do something about this.
All right.
I haven't been able to work.
Okay.
And I have degenerative disc disease diagnosed six weeks.
What address? You didn't say your address.
I'm at 416 South Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. 416 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida.
I love y'all.
Okay.
It's awful.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Judith Flattery.
Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I want to thank Commissioner May for bringing up the subject of the Nexus Study. We've waited a long time for that, and I'm happy to hear that you'll be addressing that specifically in a workshop. What I ask is that you come out of that workshop with some deadlines, with a calendar for things to be done, because as we've heard discussed a lot tonight, there's so much going on, and we're missing the boat. We're missing the chance to get the linkage fees and to help us develop housing that our citizens can afford. So please, make sure that you set some deadlines out of that meeting so that we can get this done as soon as possible. As an editorial comment, somebody... As someone who's done a lot of editing work, I was really disappointed with the quality of that study. And there are typos, there's poor grammar, there are incomplete sentences, there are sentences that make no sense. For what we paid, we deserved a much better product than that, and I hope that you will tell the provider as much. And then finally, you brought up the Oasis project. I went to the developers' meeting for that. It is a beautiful project, and I think it has the same paradox that Mr. Morris referred to earlier. It does bring extra traffic, but they're also putting two connector roads through there that's going to help pull traffic off so that if LPGA is backed up, you can work your way over to Mason. I think that's a real benefit, and that has to be weighed along with the addition of the cars that that particular thing will bring. I agree with you. It's a beautiful, beautiful project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Sandy, I'd like to compare your edit notes with mine, because we do need to hold them accountable for what we paid for. So let's see what you've done, and I'd like to compare it to mine. Okay? Thank you.
Also, if you notice, we've sent it back twice.
Send it back. Send it back.
Yeah. We sent it back twice because of those issues, and it's still a document that is not the... A standard that we should have sent.
Well, tell them to give us the electronic copy and some money back, and we'll make the corrections ourselves.
Electro.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So our next speaker is Judith Flattery, and on deck is Brenda Robinson.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judith Flaherty, and I'm here with Diane Sellers in the back, Harborview condominiums, 145 North Halifax Avenue in Daytona Beach. And I represent the owners of Harborview tonight. I'm here to discuss short-term rental consequences. Our condominium currently has a six-month minimum rental policy with the background check, and we have done our due diligence to keep our property safe for all of our residents. Ninety percent of our residents signed the petition against the going with short-term rentals and Airbnbs. We are all united in not wanting to change with the short-term weekly rentals being discussed for Zone 3. We are an 82-unit condominium with the majority of seniors and also some handicapped residents. Most of them are on a fixed income. I have been there for several years, 18 to be exact, and I know that this going in is going to affect our HOA fees. There are many reasons for this. I've dealt with other condominiums, so I'm very familiar with this. Water bills will increase. Our garbage would need to be picked up five days a week if we have short-term rentals. Right now, we're at a three times a week, which would then mean that our maintenance personnel has to be increased. Our parking is already very limited, and that would cause many problems. We've just upgraded our elevators, and move-ins and move-outs would cause damage. Common areas like our pool and community room would be affected. They'd be overcrowded, and the maintenance on the hot tub and pool would definitely increase, again, increasing our HOA fees. We have a state-of-the-art security system, which our police department has complimented us on, which we would constantly have to check. A lot of our residents walk to the ocean for exercise. There would be a trash... There would be trash and people we don't know that would be never changing. Again, I stress that our HOA fees would definitely rise, and some of our residents would be forced out. I ask this, as a matter of fact, I implore you that you consider what you are doing to the residents that try to set a good example of neighborhood and cooperation. I so appreciate you listening to me tonight. Thank you.
May I ask you, who told you that your property was under consideration for short-term rental?
I read the article in the paper, and I'm in Zone 3, and I'm in the core area.
Okay, and you live in a neighborhood that has an HOA, right?
Yes, sir.
It would not be... It's not possible for us to do that.
Well, that is such a relief to me, Mayor.
Yeah. Where you live, it's not possible.
Well, we are in the... You know what?
Doesn't matter. You have an HOA, and you're governed by an HOA.
That cancels it out?
Doesn't matter where you live.
Well, this was a very successful night. Thank you. And I'm freezing. I've been here for so long.
I hope it's successful for me.
Hi, Japhne.
My name is Brenda Robertson and I live at 409 North Wild Olive Avenue. And I'd like to talk about short-term rentals also. A year ago, maybe a little longer, I got a card on my door from Mr. Mayor asking that I call him. I called him and he said, geez, I wanted to talk to you about short-term rentals. How would you feel if we moved them into your neighborhood? And I said, well, I'd hate the idea. I just'll never get used to it. And I thought he was gonna cry, you know, it was like, but why? And I felt like, all right, so I live around illegal short-term rentals, Airbnbs. The homeowners don't live there. Their renters go in and out, in and out. Every day, there's a different renter. I like seeing the same faces in my neighborhood. I want to go out my door and hi, neighbor, and know their faces. I want to know these people. Loud parties, of course, I call the police. I've called the zoning on one particular illegal Airbnb. I even found them in the Airbnb site advertising. They were shut down, they sold the place, I think, but now somebody else has moved in and they're doing the same thing. Across the street from me, I have three illegal Airbnbs. I'm totally against it. So, recently, seeing the articles in the paper, I decided, well, I'm gonna take a walk around the neighborhood. I'm gonna ask my neighbors, how do you feel? I knocked on every door from Seabreeze to Main Street. Nine out of 10 people that answered the door, they were so totally against Airbnbs and short-term rentals. I have a petition of 151 names against allowing Airbnbs in our neighborhood. And I'd like to present, submit this to my, to her.
You can submit it to the, yeah, and it'll be on the record.
I talked to renters in these homes and apartments and they're scared. They see that their landlords are starting to make preparations for, to maybe move them out, to not extend their leases. And they're comfortable, they don't want to go anywhere. I've got a neighbor across the street from me who lives in Port St. Lucie who's fixing her house up. I mean, she showed me her house, not knowing that I'm against this. Every room has a little keypad to where she's built a kitchen in the rooms. Big house. I just am totally against this. I would hope that you would do everything to not pass, not change the existing laws.
And where do you live?
409 North Wild Olive.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is William Bitteroff.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. She lives behind me, Mayor. She lives behind me. She came around with a petition about a couple of months ago. Mm-hmm. On Wild Olive. I live on Grandview, she lives on Wild Olive. It's the next block over. No, she's part of the CRA area. She's just south of Oak Ridge. All right. A couple of things. I wish you would not have used the word moratorium, Mayor. We went through this in 2000. We were looking at what could be built on the ocean and we put in a moratorium. There were 12 hotels planned on going in and then we didn't realize 2004, the hurricanes came, 2008, the recession came. They're still vacant. We have vacant property all up and down the ocean. They were never built. All right? Be careful what you ask for and how you use it because we don't know what's gonna come down the pike. You could have, with that word, tilled future development. We don't know. It's a terrible word and you know developers, they get skittish. All right? Secondly, redistricting. I'm worried about the redistricting. You will redistrict for 2, 4, and 6. You will not redistrict for 1, 3, and 5. 1, 3, and 5, once we vote, will stay in for four years. I don't think you're planning on having all of the districts vote on in 2024. Beach appearance. The beachside is getting raggedy. We need to, especially A1A on Oak Ridge. I know it's planned, but it is not well-kept up. We have to pay attention, especially north of Main Street. There's a lot of activity going in north of Main Street. Four or five four-star hotels. The restaurants, the plazas planning are upscale. We cannot have garbage for these people to walk through. I asked Letitia for the study, for the parking study. We've had three of them and apparently, we can't find them. So, I'm asking you to do a study because Memorial Day and on these major holidays, they don't know where to park. We don't have a plan to get them to a parking space. Graduation is a zoo. Those cars are backed up and they're going to be late for graduation. And you don't want to be late for graduation. And we can avoid that if we just had a plan to get them into a parking place somewhere at an appropriate time. The Nexus study, if you've read it, it's the pits. It really is. It says midtown, but it's not midtown. It's only half of midtown. The midtown CRA is... It has to be done again.
Our next speaker is Anne Ruby and on deck is Jenny Nazak. Sorry.
Anne Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I have a bunch of little stuff. Could I please get copies of that July calendar to pass out at BMW tomorrow night? Thank you. That would be great. I'm looking forward to reading that myself. When you're talking about mass transit and being worried about traffic on the far west side, you have got, I mean, when you worry about heavy traffic, you've got to start thinking mass transit. You've got to have, you know, I drive up and down Williamson sometimes and they have big sidewalks and they're out in the broiling sun, whoever want to walk or ride their bike on them. So, it's not just enough to throw a sidewalk out there. You've got to make sure that they're pleasant to be on and actually usable. So, mass transit, bus station, a transfer plaza out on the far west side with bus service that goes north and south so that you can go Port Orange to Ormond without going all the way into downtown, that would alleviate traffic. So, we've got to start thinking of solutions besides cars. Project Oasis, I'm with Sandy. That project is very nice. The connector roads make it wonderful. It's one of the few projects I've seen where people actually could walk around their neighborhood. So, I think, as much as I'm not for development, I think that one is very, very well-done. I think it would be good to have a map made or a list made of the available parcels that would be eligible for application of the inclusionary zoning, the Nexus study. Because we may have, you know, you may be calling for a moratorium, we may only have two or three big parcels left. So, I think we got to know what's got nothing on it and nobody's talking about it. So, that would, I think, be useful information for the commissioners to have. And then this is on 11A, the Arts Board. There were some things I had little quibbles with in the language, in the definition of professional art or artist. The last "and" I think should probably be an "or" because it lists all these "or" activities, designations, and then it says "and an advanced training in the arts." I think that should probably be "or advanced training in the arts" because you don't want to have to have someone be, I've been awarded something and I have advanced training. So, I think "or" is probably more...
I'll take a look.
Okay. Yeah. And the other one is, the board shall meet monthly if necessary. Who's to decide what's necessary? That's one of the big problems we have is if boards only meet when they're necessary, they can't discuss things together. So, even if they don't have something to vote on, it might be able to kickstart ideas if they can meet when even it's not necessary because they don't have anything to vote on. And then the last one on that was, it says the board should be responsible for evaluating and based on the review criteria established. And the proposal doesn't issue review criteria, it just talks about minimum standards. I don't think they're necessarily the same thing, so it may want to give some thought to what the review criteria will be. Because you could have six things that meet review criteria, minimum standards, but then how are you still gonna review them? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. I'm in favor of the Oasis development for the reasons being mentioned. We shouldn't punish the good new guys just because of some of the less good ones that have come before and it will be beneficial. Development, it shouldn't have to be a bad word. Development can be a thing that allows students to want to stay here and work after they graduate from our wonderful colleges. Development could be a thing that allows families to stay together instead of families having to live across the country from one another. I mean, development can bring all these jobs. There can be lots of cool things about development. Density isn't the enemy, sprawl is the enemy. Now, the good thing is sprawl can get retrofitted, like what Anne was saying about mass transit. Every single development where people live, even if people, some people would never ride mass transit, every development needs for people to have, not be stuck in their cars if they don't want to be. There have to be options, especially as people get older and shouldn't be driving. We could have shuttle buses. And I know I'm older, but whatever, but yeah. We could have shuttle buses and also, yes, shaded sidewalks. I even have a hard time. I mostly get around by foot and bicycle and I even have a hard time sometimes like, oh my God, it's like so broiling out here. So, we do, we need trees. And it shouldn't be like a weird fringe thing to like trees, like, oh, that girl Jenny, she likes trees. No, more people should. We should venerate trees, especially the oak tree. Yep, I hear other people saying they like trees too. Oak trees, we like them. Speaking of which, it has been a very just broiling summer. And one of the main reasons it's been so hot is because there's been an abnormally little amount of rain. It's a little better on the mainland, but it's still even crispy on the mainland. Beachside, we're kind of like an early warning system. We had 0.6 inches of rain in the month of June and July's looking deadly too. My home is the headquarters of Daytona Beach Permaculture Guild and we are irrigated entirely with rainwater that we collect off the roof. So, I'm using up the last of my barrels from last year's rains and I hand carry it physically to all the plants in my yard. And so, I know how much rain we've gotten and how much we haven't gotten and I know which plants are dying. So, the point in case being that this is really important to notice because we are affecting the weather. And one of the ways that we have a normal rain cycle is to make sure we don't remove too many trees and take care of the ones we have. But also, in the cases where we've had to take them away to plant more vegetation and have our emphasis be on heat mitigation, that has to be a major emphasis of our landscaping. I have lots of help for that. Anyone can contact me. Thank you. Bye.
And our, excuse me, our final speaker tonight is Doyle Lewis.
Good evening again. Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I came here tonight just to keep things simple because this summer has been something very hot. So, simple things were on my list for this month and then it got a little bit complicated. I'm here to talk about parking. Parking for small vehicles, parking for medium vehicles, parking for larger vehicles. That should be looked at on every development and put into the program. So, there's some parking spots for the smaller vehicles that other larger vehicles can't get into. If it actually helps with the roads. The biggest thing I wanted to talk about was electric bicycle parking. They're harder to park, they're harder to lock down. If you don't lock it to something, people pick them up, put them in their large vehicle and haul them off. That's a very, very lucrative thing to do. And if you want to reduce traffic, use bicycle lanes on the roads, make sure they're there. And electric bicycles are becoming very, very popular. And with that being sold around Ormond Beach, Daytona Beach, South Daytona, the beach parking, there's no place to lock down bicycles. And if you lay them down, people think they're vacant and they take them. And they're light enough, you can carry with a lock on it if you only lock the tires. And our new wonderful park, I'm not real sure how you can use those bicycle racks because they're kind of hard to lock, especially if you have a good lock. So, the bicycle situation with the engineering there looks really nice, but not usable, which really defeats purpose on reducing traffic and having people walk around and lock bicycles down. It's a huge problem. That's my main concern about lightening up, making sure people can enjoy life, slow down, smell the roses, smell the new trees, enjoy the grass. Actually, here, it's growing because the elders like to do that. I happen to have one thing that I say to the elders that actually enjoy hearing the grass grow is I listen to my hair grow. It happens to make some noise. I've changed my career to become a person that enlightens people on the new laws. Because a lot of people walk around thinking they know new laws and they change them too often for people to understand the laws, to confuse people more. It's getting very complicated in America. I wish people would actually enjoy riding bicycles more. But how can you stop and enjoy the roses when you can't even lock the bicycle down? Even electric bicy... Thank you.